Okay, it is six o'clock and we are ready to open the city council February one work session. It's called to order. We have real call please. Okay. Our first agenda item is the state of the school district presentation from superintendent. Clint Raver. Shannon.
Yes.
Do the introduction.
Clint Raver is a superintendent of the Yamhill Carlton School District and he's here to provide a state of the district as well as to answer any questions that council has. I know council has expressed an interest and more partnership with the school district. And so this is where I was talking about that.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, there you go.
Great, I was trying to unmute, I was trying to unmute myself and wouldn't let me, so here we go. We've gotten pretty well versed in using Zoom in the school district and yet I still have issues from time to time myself. It sounds very official, the state of the school district, that was something I threw out to Shannon a while back, but I just really more importantly, I just wanted to take an opportunity for you to get to know me a little bit and to share a little bit of what we've been dealing with in the school district. A few highlights of some things that I want to, I want to share. But really, this is about building a stronger relationship between the school district and the, and the city of Carlton and for that matter, the city of Yamhill. How we can be more collaborative, have a stronger relationship and get more of our students involved in what's happening in our cities. So with that, I'm going to share. A PowerPoint hopefully. Sorry, see, I told you, I, I still fumble with it from time to time. Okay, are we good? Do you see that?
Yes.
Okay. Just a little about myself. Clint Raver, as I was introduced, this is my 23rd year in education. It's my 18th year in administration and first year as a superintendent. I graduated from Woodburn High School way back in 1991, so I've grown, I grew up in the valley and my wife was from Tired. Parents still live in the valley. Began my career in Silverton, teaching science and coaching and then moved into administration. It's a Lincoln County School District where I spent 15 years before coming to Yamhill Carlton three years ago and served as the high school principal until this year. And it's been, it's been an amazing place to come. An amazing place to raise my family. I, I still have two kids in the school system, one's a junior in high school and one is a fifth grader at the intermediate school. And it's, it's really, and I live right here in Carlton and it's really a fantastic town and a fantastic location to raise kids. And so we're very excited to be here. Wanted to share a little bit, you know, I was trying to think of some things that the, that the city council might want to know about the school district and I know enrollments is one that, that is talked about a lot, especially as we look at the expansion of, of home building in the area and, and you know, is it, is it something that we can, we can take on? And, and what I can tell you is this, if you look at this or district, district enrollment trend over time and you can look back in 2012, we had 1,166 students. For this school year, we're at 1,040 school districts. There's been a decreasing trend of enrollment over time and that's really nationwide. Oregon, in fact, from the 1920 school year to the 2021 school year, and this is strictly as a result of COVID and COVID protocols and parents deciding to move their students into homeschooling or leaving the state. We've had some students leave the state, but the state of Oregon had a 21,000 drop in enrollment, almost 22,000 drop in enrollment of, of students. K-12 between those two years. We've actually, last year, we actually increased our enrollment slightly and I really attribute that to our Alliance Academy Program, which is a school at home program to support parents in schooling their students at home. It more of a traditional homeschool environment, but they remain students of Yamhill Carlton School District. With that school at home program, we were able to bring kids in from outside the district that we, we probably wouldn't have had in a, in a non-COVID year. So that Alliance Academy Program actually caused us to slightly increase our enrollment for last year, but dip down a bit this year as schools were to reopen, you know, in our area and around the state. So, but as you can see, the trends are trending down slightly. We do anticipate with some of the new homes being built and the new subdivisions that, that we can see some increase enrollment from that. One of the things we look at in the school district is enrollment bubbles and it is, it especially affects small school districts and small schools to a greater degree than a large district. Portland Public School System or Salem Kaiser wouldn't see a dramatic effect on enrollment bubbles. They don't, it doesn't have that impact. But as you can see here, so for our enrollment for this school year, you know, our average student count per grade level is 80, but you can see we've got, you know, the sixth grade, we're at about 60 students. And, and how that impacts us is how we, how we staff our buildings. So when we do see an enrollment bubble like at the sixth grade level with 30 kids, that's two teachers, but at the seventh grade level with 80 kids, that's three teachers. And so as that bubble moves through, if it's a low bubble, it affects our staffing and how many teachers we need at that grade level, or if it's a high bubble, say in first grade, that's almost 100. That impacts our staffing where we may have to add staffing. So that's just some information so you can kind of see how we're scattered across our grade levels in the district. Pay no attention to the numbers on this graph. This is projected kindergarten enrollment over time and, and so it's a, a six-year look back from live births to actual kindergarten enrollment. The reason I say pay no attention to the, to the numbers because in Yamhill and Carlton zip codes, we did not have 2,000 live births. This is actually any zip code of a student that enrolled in our school district, but the kindergarten enrollment numbers. Would, there's a ratio of the number of live births to the numbers kindergarten enrollments. And so just look at the trend lines on this because it's pretty consistent, but I don't want you to get caught up in the numbers on this. So as you can see, we're trending slightly down for a number of live births. And again, that's kind of a national trend that kids are, I'm sorry, families are having fewer kids. But our ratio of, of live birth to kindergarten enrollment actually remains fairly high. So we're seeing also an increase in kindergarten enrollment from children that weren't born in our area, but have moved into our area because of increased housing availability. Before I move on to COVID-19, were there, did you have any questions around our enrollment trends or what the forecast looks like for the future for us?
Okay.
Okay. Let's just talk COVID-19 real quick, we can't get away from it. Just as kind of a look back in history of how COVID-19 affected schools. You know, in March of 2020, right before spring break, it was Thursday or Friday before spring break, we were shut down. And we went into what they said was two weeks to slow the spread and we anticipated an extended spring break. We would return back to school. After that extended spring break and life would return as normal and, and now we know two years later, nothing is normal. In May of 2020, we moved to remote learning. It was at that point, Department of Ed sent us guidance on moving to remote learning for the rest of the school year. We did not have what we came to know as comprehensive distance learning or live instruction. Really, it became making sure that kids had the work that they needed to complete at home with some Zoom check-ins or phone call check-ins. But it, it was kind of a Band-Aid to get us through the rest of that year. In September of 2020, we began the year in comprehensive distance learning. And in comprehensive distance learning, there were no students in the, in our buildings. Most staff were required to report to our buildings and we're teaching remotely. A big push to distribute Chromebooks and other technology that students could learn using at home. Purchasing of, of cameras and, and software to, to allow us to teach kids to the best of our ability at home. And that took us until November of 2020, we remained in comprehensive distance learning. But in November, we were allowed to start bringing certain students on campus for specific instructional purposes. And so it really focused on students who were our special ed population that needed additional supports. We brought in students who had limited or no internet access. You know, we've got families that live, say, up Panther Creek, way up in the hills and they don't even have cell service. And so it was very difficult to serve the needs of many of those families. So in November of that year, we were able to, in a limited fashion, to start bringing students on campus for limited in-person instruction. In February of 2021, we were able to move to hybrid instruction. So we had a number of families that chose to stay home and continue to, to do remote learning. But we also had families that were ready to send their kids back into the school building with restrictions. And so we had hybrid instruction, which meant that we had some students in person, some students learning remotely. And we began that in February of 2021. In September of 2021, this last fall, we returned to full in-person instruction with, as you're aware, with the mask mandates and social distancing mandates. Some of those criteria have been loosened. Essentially now, the social distancing requirements have all been, all but been removed as long as students are wearing masks. So now the current guidance is if there is regular mask wearing, then there is no social distancing requirement. In the event that somebody is exposed and not wearing a mask, then quarantine and isolation protocols will go into effect. And currently our isolation and protocols are so isolation is for students that have a positive test or a confirmed, or I'm sorry, a presumptive positive. Quarantine applies to close contacts or exposures. If a student or a staff member is fully vaccinated and up to date, they would not have to quarantine. If a student is not, or a staff member is not fully vaccinated or up to date and they weren't wearing a mask and were a close contact, then the quarantine time is five days, assuming that there is no, if they're not symptomatic, they're not expressing any symptoms. And if a student test or a staff member tests positive, they are to isolate for five days from the onset of symptoms, regardless of whether or not they take, when they take the test. So if they say became symptomatic on Saturday, they test on Monday, it would be five days from the onset of symptoms. They are allowed to return to school after five days if they no longer have a fever for the last 24 hours and are showing improving signs of symptoms. And the big thing is not, not to have a cough is what we really look for in returning. So, so we've been able to loosen up some of the criterias based on recommendations from the states. We're able to keep more kids and staff in school. And when we do have to quarantine or isolate them, it's for shorter periods of time. We've also implemented something called test to stay protocols, which if we have a close contact, we can test them on day one of the exposure and keep them in school if it's a negative test. And then we retest them again on day three to five. And again, if it's a negative test, they can continue with instruction. If at any point they become symptomatic or a positive test during that time, then they would have to go into isolation. This is just a graph to show you what our, what the school has looked like with COVID this year. In October, you'll see that the blue line is students in isolation. So those are students that tested positive or were presumptive positive for COVID-19. The red line is students in quarantine, so those are close contacts. So the number of students that we had in quarantine as a result of a contact, yellow line is staff isolation. So again, positive or presumptive positive staff and the green line is staff in quarantine. You'll notice some significant spikes on the students in quarantine. If you see a rather large spike like here, right around Christmas break, winter break, and then here most recently, that is actually the result because we had to shut down some elementary classrooms because there were so many positive cases in the classroom that it was beyond our ability to test to stay. So we work closely with the county health department and we consult with them. And there've been a couple of times again, right before winter break and then coming back after winter break where we had to, we had to shut down a couple of elementary classrooms. And so that sent our students in quarantine numbers rather high. You can see our staff count is actually stayed relatively low. We did have right after winter breaks and spikes in our staff counts. It, it caused us some tenuous days on whether or not we could keep our doors open. But what we've been committed to is that if we can safely open school, if we have enough staff to man the building, then we are not going to close school. And so, so far, we have been able to maintain our buildings remaining open with the exception of those a couple of classrooms. And you may be aware that we had so many bus drivers out last week that we had to shut down two routes as a result of just not having enough drivers to transport the students. And so it was really unfortunate and I understand it was a burden for families. But we did our best to do what we could to keep those routes open and it just got to the point where we couldn't do that. So, but that just gives you a snapshot of kind of where we've been at with COVID this year. I, I did read in the Oregonian today that over the last week, there's been a 22% drop in positive cases in the state of Oregon, COVID-19 cases. They projected that the peak would be somewhere between the 27th and February 1st. They believe we're on the backside of the peak now. And if what we've seen in other countries and states, it should be a fairly precipitous drop in, in the number of cases, we hope. Just some highlights that I want to share with you. There, there are many more, but I just, I didn't want to be here all night, so I just selected a few. The elementary school wanted to make sure that their parent teacher organization was recognized for providing resources for a digital reader board that's being installed at the elementary school. They're waiting on some technology to go with it, but they're excited about that. They also received $1,500 in donations from Family Life Church, which has a site near the campus that they're hoping to build on at some point. They're using our school right now, renting our school on Sundays. As a result of one of their giving efforts, they were able to provide $1,500 to buy some technology for the elementary school. I don't know if you've heard, Yamhill Carlton High School has a pretty phenomenal rocketry team. You know, when I first toured the school and, and they told me that they had a rocketry program and I was imagining those, you know, $3 kits you buy at Walmart. And, you know, they go out on the field and, and launch them a couple of times a day. Well, they, they, these rockets are six feet tall, carbon fiber, carry payloads and sensors. And under the right conditions are capable of reaching 10,000 to 20,000 feet. And they were one of 17 schools in the nation, teams in the nation to be selected for the NASA student launch competition. In Alabama, they will be traveling to Alabama later this spring to compete against other high schools. And there's also a college division too that, and, and that's very prestigious and it's not. It's been a lot of work. They've had to do some research and studying, they're building their rocket from scratch, doing all the, all the modeling and, and the math that goes with it, as well as presentations to NASA scientists on, on their work. So very impressive with our rocketry program and Mr. Slavich has been able to do. And the high school, we're selected for the Promise of Oregon program. It is through the Oregon School Boards Association. They selected three school districts throughout the state to highlight students who are the promise of Oregon. And, and the whole premise of this is that they interview the students. Students were selected based on a criteria that we developed on who, you know, how we wanted students to be highlighted. It was actually a nomination program from the teachers on who they thought deserved to be highlighted in this. And the students answer a simple question, why are you the promise of Oregon? And they'll say, I'm the promise of Oregon because I want to be a police officer and protect my community. I am the promise of Oregon because I want to be a nurse and help those that, that, you know, need help. So we have been highlighted throughout the year on the promise of Oregon. I can get the, the link for that information to Amy if you would like that. So you can follow that on their Facebook and Twitter feeds, but that's pretty special for us and, and really highlighting some of our amazing kids. So we're, we're very proud of that. Again, I'm just going to circle back to really, you know, the, the basis for why I'm here tonight is, you know, we want to talk about building partnerships with our, our cities and, and, and our city councils and our, and our leadership. Just some ideas that, that we've done in the past at, in, in other districts. Having students come and give a report instead of listening to me talk, I would rather have you listen to students and the great things that they feel are taking place in their school. Opportunities for job shadows or internships, perhaps work experience opportunities with our city leaders. One of the great things that we had done, I had a very good relationship with the mayor of Toledo and Rod would come into our government class and talk about, you know, city government and, and how city government works and, and what his role is as a small town mayor and how that compares to other, other roles and duties and sizes of cities. So we would love to get city leadership in and talk to our kids. And then community service projects, you know, I want our kids to get out and have a connection to the community and, and if there are projects that we can partner on to improve both Yamhill and Carlton, then we want to get kids out doing that. A senior graduation requirement is community service and what we call a senior project where they have to do some research, solve a problem. And that would perfectly fit with building partnerships with the city of Carlton on getting some of our kids out to get back to the community, but also, you know, serve a need in their senior projects. So. Okay, that's it, any, any questions for me? I'll do my best to answer them.
Clint, do you, over the years, the things have kind of changed a little bit with the schools? The elementary school and the intermediate school and high school, do you envision that kind of staying in that similar structure for years to come? You know, it used to be K through A in both Yamhill Carlton, just based off your numbers and stuff, do you kind of see that, that staying, stay in the same way going forward?
I think at this point, we'll, we'll probably maintain the structure, at least in the, in the foreseeable future. One of the questions I get asked from time to time about the new developments is do we have space? And we, we do have space at each of our buildings and, and we've got some programs that are occupying classroom spaces that, that wouldn't, that wouldn't need to, that we could move to other locations. So even if we see an uptick in, in enrollment from some of these housing developments coming into the area, we still have space to maintain those at this point. So I don't, I don't see there being a need anytime in the near future to restructure again.
Great, thanks.
Superintendent, the Oregon Small City Mayor's Association does a contest each year for students to write an essay about if I were mayor. And I'm thinking that, I, I can't remember the deadlines on it for this year or not, or if we're still in, in a place where we could do that. But I'm thinking it might be kind of a fun project for us to do with, Shannon and I have talked about it briefly and then we were waiting to, I was kind of waiting to visit with you here about that.
Yeah, absolutely, I'm all for it. I know, I know I've received emails probably from you in the past and I know Rod in Toledo would send those to us. And I always forward those on to the, to the language arts teachers and the building principals and encourage them to participate in that. So I'm, I'm all for it and, and if you get me the information, then I will, I will forward that on and strongly encourage them to, to try and work that into the things that they're already doing in their curriculum.
Sounds good, thank you.
Superintendent, I'm glad you mentioned some of the job shadowing and work experience. We actually have a couple of things that we may be able to partner in a different, a couple of different areas we're going to talk about later in this meeting in a couple of different capacities. The first is we are working with limit workforce partnerships and set core to do a youth experience to develop sidewalks in our community to provide actual skills on the job training and provide them a skill set and they will be able to walk away with tools of their own as well as those skills.
Awesome.
So we might need some help in advertising and getting the right youth for the program. And we're hoping to knock it out of the park this summer with this program so it can be a yearly program for our.
Awesome. No, I think that's fantastic, yeah, let me know, you know, forward me the information and I'll line you up with Trevor DeSilva's is our manufacturing teacher and does construction and manufacturing and, and he's the one that I'll connect you with and, and that's, I think that's fantastic.
Great. The other one, a completely different capacity is the realignment of OR47 is just kicking off and restarting. And so I'll need to coordinate with you and the school bus coordinator to see if any of the realignment will impact any of the routes.
Okay. Yeah, just, you, you have my email, so just when you're ready to have that conversation, let me know and we'll set something up.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm off, if there's nothing else, I'm off to a basketball game in Dayton, so you can take it to the Pirates.
Well, best wishes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay. And next up is Jenna.
Yes, Mary Council. Next up is Jenna Berman from ODOT Region 2. She's the Active Transportation Liaison. And there, Jenna, as you know, our council and our community are very interested in Safe Routes to Schools. You've already seen and heard the partnership we're looking to develop with our school district. And so we'd love to hear from you about the program, the grant opportunities, the criteria for the program and what kind of assistance we can get for the grant program.
Sounds good. Um, you guys can all hear me, okay, I assume. And you can see me, is it like a relatively big screen so you can kind of, you're looking in different directions? Good, okay, so I'm used to teaching, I used to teach Safe Routes to School program. So I'm like really into reading my audience and being able to figure out how to, you know, so you guys all having masks on and being remote is a little challenging for me. But I decided to, to try and keep it brief, which is a little hard for me because I love this topic, but, and not do a PowerPoint. So I'm just going to talk at you guys and then I'm going to follow up with an email that has kind of all the key dates and things. So that the timing for this is perfect. You know, Safe Routes to School, that name is a program that started at the federal level in 2005, so kind of beside the point. But what's fascinating about that is your T has, your transportation system plan was done in 2009. And because those happened kind of close together, you guys have more information about Safe Routes to School and your transportation system plan than I've seen in like any other plan. And so I was just revisiting it before this meeting. And so it's really cool because you already have a bunch of things identified as potential projects to pursue funding for. Now mind you, some things have changed since 2009, but you have like this really great starting place. So what's happening at ODOT is the federal program went away, but the state decided to keep funding for it. And that funding pot has increased. So the big concept is anything that helps kids to bike and walk to school safely within a mile of the school is eligible. So the beauty of this program is that in a town like yours, which is smaller, that can mean a lot of things, right? That can cover a lot of ground, right? So this is a really great funding source for all things biking and walking related. So sidewalk infill, crossings, bike lanes, your roads are kind of narrow, so that's tricky. But just to give you a sense of the types of things you could do with this funding. And so it's coming up, so that's why this is really timely conversation. So thanks for having me now. As of today, you guys are like right on the ball. As of today, the window has opened for initial applications. And there's three different programs and I am going to get to, you know, some ideas of what I think you guys should do. But the biggie is the construction program, so I'm going to talk about that the most because that's like building sidewalks, building flashing enhanced crossings, right? And I've heard from some of you and talked with some of you already about the desire for some of those improvements. So I have some ideas of where. And, and then there's an education grant to get like coordinators into school districts to help with the programs like walk and roll. with the programs like walk and roll week and stuff like that. And then there's a a third little sliver of funding available for these project identification plans. There's like a safe routes to school plan, basically. And I kind of go back and forth on whether or not I think you guys need that because you have so much already in your transportation system plan. And so that's just one thing I I'm still pondering a little bit and would be happy to talk more with Shannon or the whole group. But so for the construction grants, because I think that's probably where your brains are at the most. And that the way it's going to work this round, I just clicked through the application to revisit it for you and it's just really user friendly. I'm I'm just going to be honest and say, unlike a lot of programs at ODOT, this one is really pretty intuitive and user friendly, and I've worked with a lot of communities to help them with their applications. So Shannon, just so you know, the phase one of the construction application, if you guys did that is is a pretty basic, you know, one sentence problem statement, you know, kids are walking from here to here, the school's over here, they need to cross Polk, they need to cross Highway forty seven at Polk, right? And and the speeds are kind of high there and we'd really like to add a flashing beacon and help to slow down cars and make sure they have a safe crossing, right? And so that would be, and then you have kind of an estimate of what you think it would cost, which I can help with, or you know already with your sidewalk projects that you've done on your streets, you know? And so you put out the main concept and that's do just open today, do March eighteen. And it really doesn't have to be super detailed. You know, yet. And then come summer, and I'll send you an email with all these dates, Shannon, that I have that summarizes all of them. But come summer is when you flesh out that application. But the great thing is the way it was set up is that this first initial, sorry, first initial phase, you'll kind of see how you score. You know, and and that will help you decide whether or not it's sort of worth going farther with it. And one strategy might be to think of two priorities, you know, maybe one application that's really sidewalk infill focused and one application that's really crossing focused and and see how they score and maybe go for both or maybe go for one. So I just want to throw that out there. You don't have to just do just do one. And just so you guys know, anything that touches the state system, as you can imagine, might be a little more complicated. And I will help with that. And it kind of asks you if you've talked to ODOT and if you haven't, it points you to me. So I can help with kind of coordinating a design that our engineers would approve for the crossing, for example, or a cost estimate, that kind of thing. So so I want to let you guys have a chance to ask questions, but one thing I just wanted to say in looking at your map is that the really cool thing is in your transportation system plan, I won't pull it up because I don't know if you could really, I thought about pulling it up. I don't know if you could really see, but starting on the north end of town, your routes that are identified again, two thousand and nine, are Cooch, you know, coming down Cooch, across on Monroe and down Third. So that all makes a lot of good sense, you know, based on what I know and what's out there today. And then on the south side of Main Street, the crossings are Washington and Polk Street. Right? Which I think makes sense also from what I've heard, especially that Polk Street crossing. One question would be is if you want to tackle Washington because it doesn't, looks like it doesn't go all the way through. So I don't know if kids are scrambling through there and there'd be parking impacts, I think, because it's an unfinished roadway. So that's something to think about. Another thought, and then I'll stop. But is to think about kind of thinking ahead to the the big project that's coming to your downtown. And whether or not that kind of leading trucks up and around on Monroe Street might lead us to consider the safe routes to school route, bringing kids down Cooch all the way to Main Street and over to Third instead, because the trucks will have been pulled off and maybe and Main Street already has really wide sidewalks. So that's just a thought that I wanted to throw out. So I, you know, my suggest, just so you know, for the application, there's you know, some eligibility requirements, like I said, within a mile of the school, there's a match requirement that can be pretty high. Clint had to go, but I don't, I don't know what your rate of free and reduced lunches. But if it's over forty percent, so a little lower income, then your match requirement drops from forty percent to twenty percent. I know that's a lot, but anyway. So there's a pretty big match requirement depending on your demographics. So just to let you know about that. And then lastly, there is the possibility that we could leverage the other ODOT project and add safe routes to school oriented or safe routes to school funding onto that project to get some stuff in, but you we really have to figure out, because you have five years to deliver it, you know, to make sure that that could happen timing wise and there's pros and cons to that, right? If one project has a delay or issues, you know, do you really want them tied? You know, that kind of thing. So my recommendation would be that you guys, you know, chat and kind of figure out what might be priorities. Like I said, there's like crossings, you know, Monroe, Washington, Polk, we're all called out. You know, and that would involve us or or you say, hey, we're just, we're going to have enough of ODOT. I would not take it personally. We're going to have enough of ODOT with the other project and we might just want to do some sidewalks on our roads for this round, right? So you could go a couple of different ways. And I'll stop and see if you have any questions.
Is how do we know what the best approach is? Like, where is the best place to put a light or put, does someone come out? Or has that already been done with our transportation plan?
Yeah, so I, that's why I was looking at your transportation system plan because it really kind of identified either the sort of natural what we call desire lines, right? The desire, like the natural, like walking routes. Or it identified the ones that the folks at the time involved in this plan thought would be the safest. Right? And so, you know, I would lean on that, but you don't have to stick to it strictly and you know, and so like I've been thinking a lot about the crossing at Monroe and whether or not this is a time to tackle that one at Monroe and, you know, the north side of the highway, right? Or maybe don't do that until you kind of have that project a little farther along and you know what the design is. And that project could put some money into a crossing there as well. So, you know, there's not like a right and wrong. I just would strategize around like where you see the most kids crop kind of naturally walking today and 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 reinforcing those routes. And you've already invested recently along Polk Street. That's why that one kind of keeps coming to mind for me. Because you've already built, you just built new sidewalk, right? Along there. So that's kind of a, so then if you build off that investment and do a crossing there, you know, it's it's kind of leveraging that. So that's one thought I have. And just so you know, the program's relatively new. It's only been, this will be just our second cycle or third. There's a good amount of money there, you know, thirty million ish every two years. So two year cycle. However, there's a lot of pent up demand. So right now I will tell you that the schools that have the higher rates of free and reduced lunch, which means lower income demographics are probably going to be the most are going to be the most successful for a couple of rounds because of our kind of equity emphasis right now on investment. Do any of you know where your elementary school is at? I I looked it up earlier and it said over ninety five percent free to reduce lunch and I just didn't know if I had that right. I didn't think so.
I don't think that's correct. I think.
Yeah.
We can find out, but I I think we struggle with that.
Yeah. Yeah. And so my, if that percentage is puts you back in that forty percent match category, Shannon, you know, it's one of those things where it may take a few rounds for those higher need communities to get their projects funded and then it'll start to be more competitive for some of the other communities.
Jenna, assuming that we were successful this round, when would we see the funding to us? I know you said we have five years to get the project completed, but when would we see that funding?
Um. Um. I'm trying to remember, reflect back on the last round. So they're due in August or July. So May to July is sort of the yeah, July thirty first is when the fully fleshed out construction grants are due. And then typically there's a scoring and there's a really diverse committee that looks at everything. And then it gets approved by the Trans Oregon Transportation Commission. I believe it was like in November last time, you know, it was a couple of months and people started to get funding via an IGA in in the beginning of the year. So just I I could get back to you with more precise, but that's just me remembering.
No, that's perfect. That gives us an estimate.
So we're kind of talking about a year from now potentially for funding to start, but the gal who runs this program is amazingly efficient and good at improving systems. So it could be a little sooner.
That's excellent information. I appreciate it. Not just for this funding cycle, but as we look at our capital improvement projects for each budgetary cycle, that's great to know.
Yeah, good. Yep, yep. And I've been thinking about you guys a lot as well, but just to mention, got to make a quick plug for the Oregon Community Paths Program. New funding source, more money than we've ever had for off system paths. We've actually never had a dedicated funding system at the state. I won't go into the why, but so this is pretty exciting. And I know that the Yamhatlus Trail, the bigger concept has had some challenges politically, but it doesn't, in my mind, and maybe I'm wrong and you can tell me if I'm wrong, but it doesn't mean that you couldn't have a really cool standalone multi-use path in town for folks from the south end, you know, just for just for you guys, you know what I mean? And so I just want to also mention that funding source and that's also an every two year cycle. And I can't tell you exactly when it's going to be right now, Shannon, but it's probably coming up in the fall, I think. So I just want to mention that so you guys can be strategic about kind of how much you go after. But it's pretty exciting times in the world of active transportation here. There's more funding than we've had historically.
So Jenna, oh, can you hear me? Okay?
I can, thanks.
Okay, good. So in addition to the reroute Highway forty seven project that you mentioned, we, the city is also embarking on a major project simultaneously updating our comprehensive plan and development code. And we're, we've retained three J consulting to work with us on that project. Interestingly, interestingly enough, three J consulting is also involved with the Highway forty seven reroute. So there's a lot of planning and design work and and outreach and all kinds of things that are going to be happening within this next year. So what you know, may not happen this year, I think within a year, we'll probably be able to really identify and pinpoint areas where you know, grant opportunities with safe routes to schools could come into play.
Yeah, I think you're, I think that's such a great point and and I would not presume to tell you what's best. I just don't know enough, but I think one of your big decision points with this is, you know, whether or not you kind of test the waters by applying for something, you know, maybe away from the reroute. You know, just to like get some additional funding maybe into some areas or wait until the next round and see how that reroute project is evolving and then make sure that a safe routes construction grant maybe builds on that, you know, and did we get funding for an enhanced crossing at Monroe, for example, and the highway and 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 if that didn't get in the reroute project, is that where safe routes to school then comes in, you know? And so a couple of of different approaches here for sure. And you know, it might just end up being because of the other work that you just mentioned, it might end up being a capacity decision. I mean, Shannon's a go getter and all, but like we don't want to kill her either, so.
Thank you, Jenna. I appreciate that. In that same breath, I'm going to say, can you send me the Oregon Community Path stuff as well?
I know, I I just realized, I just threw another one out there and you're like, oh, my gosh.
I think the the crossings that you had mentioned earlier, Polk Street and Washington Street, they are clearly outside of the of the whole reroute process and those are are areas that, you know, are at this point in time, pretty unsafe to be crossing there. But I never see a kid cross there at Polk Street. I don't think any parent wants their kids to cross there.
And it might be. It might be.
Do you?
Or because with the ADA project that you probably saw, we have two enhanced crossings at Polk and Pine and Grant and Pine. That project. So the one at Polk and Washington, we could explore.
Yeah, exactly. And the ADA project wasn't able to add, I don't know if Brennan's on, but the ADA project wasn't able to add like the flashing, yeah, he has, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Brennan, but the flashing beacons, because he really had to stick to the ramps and stuff. So this again is that kind of phase two potentially to come through and then you know, you've already got these new shiny ramps and then to add those posts with the beacons.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks. But we did, I mean, you guys, it's been great, you know, we've heard, you know, we looked into that, we we tried to see if we could add that funding and you know, because of the streamlining process behind the ADA project, we weren't, but that's why, yeah, that's why you started asking questions about safe routes to school. So this is perfect.
Any other questions, comments? Okay.
Yeah, and just one, one plug after Clint seeing, I came on early because I really wanted to see what he had to say about the school district, obviously, because this involves that, but if and when we do this, Shannon, I'm also super excited about what you have planned for youth engagement around the Main Street sidewalks, but I really think it would be interesting if there, if we could identify, if we plan ahead and could identify a kiddo that needs or a couple that need a senior project. I couldn't help but think that it would be really interesting for them to go out and observe where the kids are walking today. That might be an interesting piece of information to help us, you prioritize your your applications.
Great suggestion, Jenna. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd love to work with them. I mean, if I, there's all kinds of walk audits, handouts that I've done with parents and stuff like that. If we wanted to meet up and do a walkabout and talk about what to look for, you know, and make it educational, that would, that would be really cool. So anyway, you just let me know.
Great. Okay.
Okay, so Shannon, I'm going to send you the ODOT email that has all of the safe routes things. Please don't be overwhelmed and think you have to do it all now. But definitely, I hope you guys are excited about the possibilities and you know, kind of can think ahead to some different phases of making improvements in the community.
I think we are, yes.
Good. I can't see those enthusiastic smiles behind those masks. Great. All right. Well, I might linger for a little bit or lurk for a little bit to hear Brennan. I don't know when he's talking, but but thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you. That covers, I think, does that cover all of our topics?
That covers all of our topics for the work session. So if there's any general counsel discussion or if you want to end the work session until seven o'clock.
I was just going to say, I mean, we could talk about it later too, when we, you know, talk about the the transportation plan update, everything. But just her mention of the students, you know, getting involved and doing that, because I did notice that that's one area where they want to have, which I would like to have input is from youth in our area as well. And that would be a great way to be involved. Just a comment. And that would be a great way to be involved, just a comment.
The comprehensive plan could be for walking, yes.
Yeah, the comprehensive plan is what I meant, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn the work session?
To adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, session is adjourned. We are out of meeting for a while.
We will go to the regular session at seven o'clock.
Nope. Okay. At seven o'clock, and we're opening the Tuesday, February 2022 City Council Meeting. Welcome, please.
Councilor Rhodes.
Aye.
Councilor Erickson.
Here.
Councilor Brenna.
Here.
Councilor Skipper.
Here.
Council President, or Malin.
Here.
Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Could you all join with me in saying the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which this stands, one nation, united in the heavens, with liberty and justice for all.
Looking at my back. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Yes, we're looking, we are going to add a learner support for the crosswalk sidewalk project. Do we have to really add them?
Okay. Ceremonies, appointments, or announcements at this time, there and then? All righty. Item six, citizen comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any items off or on the agenda. When invited by the mayor, members of the public shall come forward, state your name and street address, and direct all comments to the mayor. Comments are typically limited to three minutes unless additional time is allowed. I also wanted to comment, there was some question from our last meeting. And if there are questions that are made or come through on these public comments, we are not able to discuss or request, respond to those questions at this time. However, our staff and council will make sure that you are responded to and you do get the information or get an answer to the question that you do have. So having said that, does anybody have any questions? Okay, for items on the agenda or not on the agenda? Okay. In that case, we will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We approve consent agenda.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. This takes us to number eight, ordinances, resolutions, and discussion and action items. The first item on here is a special event application being submitted by the Yam Hill Soil and Water Conservation District for a wildfire prevention event on May 7th of 2022.
Mayor and council, it looks like Keith Maslin has joined us. If we'd like to ask him some questions about the event. Keith, could you give us an overview of your desk, please?
Good evening, certainly. So this wildlife fire prevention workshop is funded by the county and the intent is to give landowners access to some people who will instruct on how to prepare their forest areas and other areas to prevent wildfire. And we'll also have some, some people from emergency services to talk about what to do to prepare if there's an imminent threat to your property.
Does anyone have any questions?
What kind of, what kind of thing about people what can about? What kind of exhibit, so like are there small training exercises or?
Yeah, yeah. So what we're planning is to have six canopies set up on a walking route. And each of those canopies will have a presenter who will present a topic. And that will be about 20 minutes per topic. And then the people will rotate from each station to the next one, you know, walking, pedestrian fashion. And then there will be a central tent or at the beginning that will be the county or the soil, water conservation district tent. And we'll have some more pamphlets and answer any other questions that people have.
Thank you. Quick question, it says you've held this event before. Was that in Carlton or was that in a different city nearby?
I'm not sure. That predates my job with the district. I know that the NRCS person that I've been working with has said that they've had it before, but I don't know exactly where.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve the special event application for YSWCD wildfire prevention event on May 7th, 2022.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. That's been approved? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item B, ODOT. This is the ramp project.
Yes, Mayor and council, in front of you is an agreement to design and construct, actually more than construct, I believe they've been designed at this point, the ADA compliant ramp improvements for OR 47. Brennan Burbank, who is the project manager, is here to answer any questions that you may have on the project. Brennan, do you want to give a brief overview before we launch into questions?
Yes, please. Thank, thank you for the opportunity to, you know, come before you and answer any questions and give you kind of a quick update on the project. So I've been working with David Evans and Associates, who has been the design team, working on these ramps for about the last 12 to 18 months. For this specific project, it contains a contract for ramps in both Veneta and in Carlton. And so obviously, we're, we're talking specifically about the Carlton ramps tonight. We have approximately 14 intersections. And then overall, between both Carlton and Veneta, we're replacing 180 ramps. So I believe it's about 50/50 split between the two. So approximately 90 a year in your community. And so we're going to be replacing all of what we call our settlement ramps in town. It's kind of a nuanced term for, for the ramps, but it's along our facility through town. And then we have a couple of intersections that we've been coordinating with your team. So Shannon, you know, predominantly to, we removed a couple of intersections downtown so that we could, we didn't get into a situation where, you know, my team came in and constructed the ramps and disrupted downtown. And then your team come in a couple later, you know, years later to do a utility project and essentially rip them out and do the same thing again. And so we're, we're trying to, Shannon and I, we're trying to work to, to see if we can get some funding so that when your team does that, it's at least partially paid with, you know, with either state funds or federal funds. So we're working on that right now with our ADA program manager. As far as the, you know, a couple of other elements, what, you know, one piece in the intergovernmental agreement that we're requesting that you approve today is we have two locations where we're planning on doing enhanced striping, one at Grant Street and one at Polk Street. Both of these, talking, communicating and talking with Shannon, the preference is to have those on the north legs or north side of the intersections. Somehow during the design, the, at, I believe it's Grant Street, it was approved on the south side. And so talking with Shannon, the, the concept would be that we would, I'm working on trying to get that corrected on my side. And as soon as that gets corrected and approved, then I'll come back with a intergovernmental agreement amendment, and then we can correct that. But ultimately, we're requesting $11,000 to, to include that in the project. And then, and any, any of those changes, we're not charging for any of that extra time. So that initial conversation that Shannon and I talked about is the, the amount that we had agreed upon. As far as the schedule is concerned, we're going to bid on Thursday of this week. And then typically, it takes about two and a half months from when we bid the project till when the contractor typically starts construction in a community. And, and we've got it set up so that the contractor has through the calendar year of 2022. So we should get all of the, the ramps in the project done this year. And typically, each ramp location takes approximately a week to take care of. So, you know, contractor will come in the first, first day, remove the existing ramp and sidewalks that we're working on. And then the next day, they could come in and form it up. And then the third day, come in, pour, and then it takes a couple of days to cure. And then they remove all of those, all those forms. And so corresponding and talking with Shannon, you know, really high priority that she's expressed is making sure that any sort of businesses that we're around, that we're communicating with, that we're coordinating, making sure that if we do have to impact them, that we try to schedule that around kind of the, the lower, you know, I'll say lower volume times for them. And, and so we'll, throughout construction, we'll constantly be communicating with both the, either the property owners, the business owners, and then also Shannon and her team. So with that, open it up to any questions that you may have.
Any thoughts, questions? Pierre May, do you have any comments, questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thanks.
Can you, Brett, do you mind explaining just maybe a little bit what enhanced striping is?
Yeah, so, well, it, the, the term, term, I may have misspoke. We're saying, I meant to say enhanced crossing, which basically means anything that's not just a regular crossing without striping. So essentially, we're enhancing the crossing by adding the striping. And in this case, I believe we're using continental type striping. And so the, the stripes would be going with the tire tracks. And that reduces the, typically reduces the maintenance costs so that you're not having those, the wheel wells or where the, the cars are typically driving, that it, that you have to replace that section frequently. And so corresponded with Shannon, you know, to get those strippings in the plan sets. Did that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And that's at the two, the two crossings is where that enhanced crossings are, right? Two intersections.
Yeah, and actually, we want to add on to that a little bit more. Yeah, and this is also adding on to what Jenna had been talking about previously. Originally, we had talked about potentially doing an RFB at Polk Street, predominantly because, you know, it's approximately to the school. Because of the funding reasons and the, the limited ability that the ADA program has to add elements to the projects right now because of how, how fast timelines we're moving through. We did design those from, from a ramp perspective. So in the future, if we wanted, or, you know, if you wanted to add in an RFB, that that would be forward compatible. And so there's locations where you could put the RFB without ripping out the ramps. So that's one consideration that we, we had when we were designing it.
So on the corner of 47 and Yam Hill Street, you've got the red, your, your blue square there. I mean, are you doing all four corners? Because part of that intersection doesn't have completely sidewalks.
Right. Can, can you repeat the corner, please?
47 and Yam Hill Street, South Yam Hill. So it'd be Main Street.
Yeah, okay, site seven. I've got the plan sets over here, so I was going to pull those up. Okay, so looking at the plan sets, it looks like we're doing three of the corners. So that would be the, the northwest, the northeast, and then the, the southeast as well. And the reason that we're not doing the other corner is because it's not considered, or that corner doesn't have what we call a settlement ramp. And the, the simplest way to, to describe what a settlement ramp is is it's a ramp that was included in our settlement agreement. And so we, we took an inventory of all the ramp locations with either on or along our system. And at that time, anything that was there, we included. And so, but if there was not a ramp at a location, then that's not considered a settlement ramp. So it's pretty nuanced. And I'm living in it day to day, and I still have to have a lot of questions as far as, oh, is this a settlement ramp or is it not? So did that answer your question?
Yeah, that helped, thank you.
Okay. Thanks for the question.
Are there any other questions?
Just, I'm going to go back on the crossings again really quickly.
Sure.
Are, so just so I understand correctly, are any of the other intersections getting any kind of striping for crosswalks included in this? Or is it just the two?
Just the two locations at Grant and Polk Street.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I move that the council authorizes a mayor's sign on necessary documents following review of the local council and the ADA compliant ramp improvements that are described in that in your governmental agreement.
Second. You did. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Well, thanks for the opportunity to come and chat with you. And if it, if there's any questions throughout construction, feel free to, you know, reach out to either myself directly or talk with Shannon, and she can follow up with me. And I can get you some answers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Have a good evening. Okay. Item C, comprehensive plan development code project. Do you want to do the intro?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, in front of you, most importantly, are our locations for the project advisory committee. Steve Cost has given an outline of general criteria to think about as you're thinking about committee selections. That will be the first and foremost so that the project can get kicked off and the committee can get working. The second part is about a brand for naming this project. And we've suggested some things, just Imagine Carlton, Vision Carlton, Carlton 2045, but nothing set in stone. We want, we want to hear from you and get a consensus about what we can start calling this project for webpages and materials and that. And Steve, do you want to speak more to that?
Good evening, everyone. No, I have nothing to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any for me. Thank you.
Folks, any questions?
I don't know, a question, I was just, you know, in terms of, you know, put this thing off. But we have twelve applicants now. Did that include ten of eleven?
Eleven or twelve. I have to count again. I think we're twelve with.
So I just want to make one point based on my experience, since I've been on the council since 2015. And I myself have been part of putting together three different citizen committees. Not one exactly like this, but because it really starts with project consulting, but one we initiated at the city level. And in each case, you know, like, for instance, the pool house committee as an example, I think we started with like twenty people on that committee. And and so that went along with all the rest of, by the time the project was winding down to conclusion, we had we had about a fifty percent attrition rate. So it's just something to keep in mind. So, you know, my thoughts are based on the number of people and the representation of folks that have applied to this committee. I think we should, just my opinion is, we should just go ahead and put all of them on the committee.
I've got a question on it. Back when I was on planning, we talked about comprehensive plan and all of that. And it seemed to be the understanding that when it comes time to take care and fixes, redo it, take care of it, that planning people in the city council would just automatically be on that committee plus outside public help. That city council people wouldn't be having to apply. You try to be on the committees. I'd like to know why, why is it not that way?
So Steve can talk a little bit more about the balance of the committee. But what was also envisioned when we went for a consultant for this project, rather than Planning Commission leading this process, that the consultant would lead the outreach and do a process which they have found successful in completing these code updates. We did do this balance process, and we did ask for applications for all because we can't have a forum of council or forum of planning commission. We don't want to overweight the advisory committee either way. We asked for everybody to apply for a couple of reasons. My understanding is previously council liaisons would be appointed to a committee one. But we had multiple, at one point in time, we had multiple council interests. So rather than causing tension, it was also seen that an application process would allow for council to view everybody who was interested. It also didn't create a preferential class of people of planning commission and council didn't have to apply, but everyone else did. So it wasn't differentiating classes. It was making it equal and equitable for everyone. And Steve, do you want to talk a little bit more about the balance of the nine to thirteen members and why you have found that successful?
Sure, and I'm sorry, I may not have heard all the details of the question. But we always recommend somewhere in that nine to thirteen range, range, just from a functional standpoint in terms of making sure that everyone is going to have a chance to to speak and that we can manage and get through our agenda items in a timely fashion. You know, we we've done fifteen, seventeen, twenty-three, and and more. And just the higher you get after around that thirteen number, the more cumbersome it gets to to just get through your agenda items. But again, that was just a recommendation. And then I don't know if this was part of the question, but in terms of the application process, in part, what one of the what the counselor was saying earlier about attrition, we find that when people, you know, self, you know, volunteer and go through the process of applying and being selected to be on a committee like this, that they're a little bit more invested and more likely to stay engaged throughout the the life of the project. So I hope that answered the questions, but I'm happy to provide more information if needed.
So I agree with you, Shirley. I think everybody should be appointed for whatever the term would be. I mean, we only have one council member that applied. And is, do we, I mean, it is better to have more than one? And then, you know, I have to agree with Grant on maybe climbing zones if we have that amount, somebody showing that amount from the council and whoever applies. But that's just a comment. I agree with you on this.
One thing, yeah, one thing I hadn't really thought about before Shannon and I had a conversation about this with regard to some other meetings is that and I can see this happening in it in this kind of a group that with council and commissioners, depending on how many are on there, I think having maybe one or two of each, I don't have necessarily a problem with that. But you start getting too many of the council or too many of the commission on there. You're going to see, I think, the residents, the the folks that have otherwise applied, deferring a little bit or feeling like there is a need to defer to the council and the commission. Like, maybe they know better than I do, and I'm gonna keep my mouth shut over here. So that would be my concern. That's one of the reasons why, frankly, I guess I I didn't apply to go on this because this is something that's pretty near and dear to my heart, and I would love to be involved. But I think probably it's better if I'm not, so.
And there will be other points in the process for Planning Commission and Council to give updates and have input, not just at the advisory committee level when it different process.
Right now, there's twelve applicants in four of which are on the planning commission. So that's basically a third almost of the group. On myself, one counselor, but.
To make a comment about it. I agree with the mayor that I think we shouldn't have too many people from the council or the the planning commission there. But also like to say the, I think we should look at the the time that people have lived in Carlton as a requirement. I know, I don't think we have a a minimum amount there, but I think we have multiple candidates with last in a year living here. And I know the comprehensive code is something that it's very important and the things we need to update it. I think, I don't know, just in my opinion, doesn't make much sense to have some citizens that haven't lived here in a long time.
I think, though, I I understand, here, maybe what you're saying, the only thing is, we did not set that that expectation up in the beginning. You know, we've already, you know, asked folks to submit their applications. We didn't establish that requirement. So how did, I don't know how we go back on that now. Well, no, yeah, we, yeah, one person said she'd been here eight months, so that I think that's what.
I don't think.
Experiences that might help us, so I don't see that as, personally, I don't see that as.
I mean, I don't see this as a requirement. I think it's just that we are, we are here choosing the the committee, I assume, right? Or we are just saying we're gonna take everyone if if it's one or the other. But I I'm not saying they shouldn't be able to apply, but as as a requirement for us to see other. That's that's just my comment.
Yeah, I would say at this point, we didn't put that on as a requirement. I think we'd be opening up a big can of worms if we did.
Into Steve's comment about when people apply, there's more interest. We did have significant number of expressed interest versus actual applications. So these are the people who actually went the extra step to apply. So they seem more committed to the initial excitement of the process.
I also think, just as a community member, just to be thinking about, while maybe not, you know, a long-term resident of Carlton, you know, I'm really interested in that and sort of becoming active in a more formal way. I I grew up in Oregon, and I've lived in Yam Hill County for years. So while I haven't lived in Carlton, I certainly understand a lot of the the big issues and concerns. So I think we have to be really careful about, or I'm saying we, I think you have to be really careful about setting limits because there are other circumstances that certainly could be be taken into consideration and given someone's experience, right? What do they do for work professionally? What is sort of their broader experience in the world and what does that bring to the community?
Thank, thank you. Do we have? You can, yes. Are we ready to make questions?
I am.
Okay.
I need to appoint all applicants, which I believe is twelve.
Yes.
To the Project Advisory Committee to update Carlton's plans and plan.
Is there a second? All in favor?
All right, those of you online who are now appointed committee members, thank you. Your next work session is February sixteenth at six P M. We will be in touch.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And thank you for volunteering. What? Yeah, we didn't. I, yeah. We had, we had all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I oppose approving everyone.
Thank you. Abstained? That's a little better. Yes, thank you.
The next part is about the branding.
Yes.
Projects. Steve, do you want to speak a little bit to this?
Sure. I think without the name right now is something along the lines of the Carlton Vision and Comprehensive Plan Update, which is lengthy. A lot of these processes take on a shorter name that or shorter or catchier name that we the we would then create a logo for and use it on all the materials that will be and all the outreach that we'll be doing. So there's kind of a unifying logo and look to the materials where people can say, oh, that's part of the Carlton, whatever you call it, project. We can keep the name as it is. There's nothing wrong with that. But when talking with Shannon and Amy, we thought, we asked if there was some interest in giving it some sort of project title or name. And we thought, wow, well, we should bring that to to council and see if they want to weigh in on that.
Any ideas?
I I kind of like Carlton twenty forty five, actually.
That's a little confusing to me.
The last twenty four.
Yeah, what's twenty forty parts?
Twenty-five year planning horizon. Twenty-four year planning horizon.
That's a little tricky because it's a twenty-year planning horizon, but Carlton twenty forty-two doesn't have quite the same ring, does it?
Everybody would kind of they hear it, they'll understand or recognize.
Yeah.
So the three suggestions that Steve threw out were Imagine Carlton, Envision Carlton, and then Carlton twenty forty-five that the mayor was just speaking to. Imagine Carlton, Envision Carlton, Carlton twenty forty-five, or anything that your imagination can come up with.
I like Imagine. Imagine or envision, yeah.
Yeah, I like those two.
Envision, I like that one. No, it is something like, we can choose all or?
No, we.
This committee then would, well, it's your choice.
You get to choose. That we can choose. Yeah, well, okay, so we have two for envision.
Yeah, the envision Carlton.
I like that one of these three.
It's motion.
Okay, do we have a motion? On?
I move the motion that we name this committee Envision Carlton.
Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, Envision Carlton it is. Thanks, Steve. We appreciate you.
Your patience.
No problem. I look forward to working with all of you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you. All right. Okay, item D, FY twenty-one audit presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Council, there was a request for receiving a brief presentation about FY twenty-one. Ms. Martinez is going to be here to speak to that and answer any questions you may have. Ms. Martinez?
I am here. Can you guys hear me?
We can, yes.
Perfect. All right, we had a question about the audit process, and as you all know, that excites me. It's my favorite subject. So I'll try to keep it brief and not go on and on. One of the questions, it was basically about the audit process and audit findings and how we did for FY twenty-one. And just to give you an idea, the auditors came in last August of twenty twenty-one. They were here for over a week and then online for probably about six weeks. And while they're here, they do a multitude of things. They check our internal controls. We have in the council room, we have to box up all the accounts payable for the year, all the receipts for the year, the deposits, the bank records, all the personnel salaries. And while they're here, they actually go through the boxes, proof where we coded, check all the details. They have staff here available for questions. And then they actually go through and talk to staff about if they have recognized any fraud activity. They sent that out to the board and receive all that. And then they process all that. In the meantime, we give them every journal entry, a full general ledger line by line, which is detailed, is about seven hundred pages and all the payroll data and the workman's comp audits because the payroll is audited several times throughout the year. One with our insurance company, one with Safe, and then also with the auditors. So they take that all back, they combine it, and they come back with the findings. And then they filed our audit with the state of Oregon in the Audit Division in November of twenty twenty-one. It was posted on the website and made available for the public. There were no audit findings this year. So we were pretty excited. They did have five best practice suggestions this year. The first one involves I-nines. They mentioned that all I-nine should have two pieces of I-D. And what brought that up was not that there wasn't two pieces of I-D, but one of the files from to the returning pool people, there was an I-nine active in there. But then the pool person had just dropped off a piece of paper without it being signed. And so that's what they saw was an unsigned document. They didn't have the full personnel file. And then number two, capital asset tracking. So the previous auditors had tracked our assets, the depreciation. And then CIS also tracks all of our assets. And they come out on every two years and do a property appraisal of our assets. And we go through what's been removed for our insurance. So they actually do track our assets, and we don't do that in-house. It's done through our insurance carrier and the appraisal firm. So they mentioned that as a best practice, but I'm, it's handled by an independent source for the city. Third, they felt that at this time, with the large amount of grants, that we should increase our fidelity, insurance coverage to cover our investment balances and our cash. And what's bringing that up is right now our treasury account sitting around six million, and they'd like to increase that. So we do have, we are working with our new insurance broker in regards to how much that's going to be. And you'll you'll see that as it comes down. Number four, they mentioned segregation of duties. And in the paper they wrote up, and they said that we have put a lot of things in practice for small municipality. This is a common best practice suggestion, but something that. But something that Carlton does that's unique is we have hired per month an independent reviewer who comes in and reconciles all our deposits, all the checks done, all the receipts, and reconciles our bank account. It's a very low cost to put an independent party, and then it keeps, as I'm the key financial person, it keeps me from balancing books. We have an independent party that comes in and does that, as something we put in. Another thing that we do is we installed a camera at the front counter, and so that all transactions through the walk-in traffic is recorded. And if any cash is taken, two staff have to receive that cash. One person cannot receive a cash transaction. And then signing of checks. We have four people that can sign checks, and that's the mayor, the council president, the city manager, and myself. For myself, I remove myself and only sign if necessary, if we have an absence. I try to keep my hands off of the checks, and if it's anything related to me, the check will hold and wait until the council president or mayor is available. And so as a city, we've, in all transactions, so if I do a journal entry, that journal entry is signed off by the city manager. It isn't just so she has to review it, and she does come back, she asks questions. And then any adjustments made by the utility billing clerk, which they made mention of, has to be reviewed or signed by myself. I have to know why the adjustment is. Was it acceptable? Rate changes and receipts all are recorded with the resolutions. So we really have a good backup system for a city of our size. And then their last suggestion was the city had moved to cash modified. I think it's been five years now. And when we moved to a cash modified, our auditor advised that we no longer had to do, it's called a management's discussion and analysis, and it's called an MDA. And basically, it's a summary to the audit that talks about current year expenses, activities, and possibility of next year's activities. Well, we stopped doing it at the audit suggestion in 2015. This audit firm would like us to pick that up, even though it's not required for the cash modified process. So their best practice suggestions were good. They took a thorough look at the books, and we had no audit findings, so we had a really good year. Is there any questions?
Thank you.
So you're ready? You're good?
I'm good.
All right, if you think of anything later, shoot me a question. I'll be happy to talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty. Moving along to Public Safety Legislative Update.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, there is a Council expressed interest in receiving an update on all of the legislative activity that happened in the last session, and what our department might be required to do, or what is already doing. And Chief Martinez has put together a PowerPoint that you will be able to take home, and if you think of questions later, he's very willing to talk to you at a later point in time, and he's here to also present some of the highlights of that report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'd like to take you back to 2012, when I came here. The city council at that time had enacted a public policing policy, and so that was really centered around community policing, and that was really kind of the philosophy and, and my background coming up through the years and over 30 years of policing practice. And so in conjunction with that, it's a lot of these things that you're going to see in this legislative updates are lessons learned that we've learned across the board with regards to you know, different agencies implementing policies that are restrictive regarding you know, chokeholds and things like that, that weren't mandatory. And it was just based on, on lessons learned. And so when I came here, I wanted to have a strong foundation with regards to how, how was Carlton Police Department going to serve its citizens to the best of its ability and have a foundation that was meeting or exceeding industry standards in law enforcement? And so accreditation was obviously the go-to, because it incorporates the most current legislative updates. It's the most updated resource for us to draw for our policies. Our policies are devised through a company called Lexipol. They have over 2 million public safety and governmental professionals across the country that that use them for that resource, and what they provide is consistency, accountability, and transparency. And you know, as in today's day and age of law enforcement, we have a responsibility. We, again, I go back to the lessons learned, we have the ability to stay consistent with how our policies and procedures and what we do out on the street to keep us safe, to keep citizens safe, to protect everybody's rights. Lexipol provides the only unified solution content, policies, and training for law enforcement agencies with constitutionally sound, continuously updated, and state-specific policies and training. As far as Carlton Police Department, any legislative new legislation that comes down is implemented into our policies as well as the state accredited agencies, anybody that's on the Lexible program. So I want to kind of go through and touch, based on a few of these things, and and, and show you what the policies that have come about and what we were doing prior to those policies coming out. So if I could go to the PowerPoint. Perfect. So if we could go to actually slide three. So chokehold, the chokehold ban, which addresses, it provides that a peace officer may not use force, that impedes normal breathing or circulation of blood of another person by applying pressure on the throat or neck. That's, again, lessons learned. A lot of agencies have implemented policies that don't allow you to use that means unless the only option you have to save your life or somebody else's life is to use that. We've had it implemented in Carlton Police Department's policies since 2012. With the recent legislation, we've updated our directives and our policies in conjunction with Lexipol. So again, this is something that we don't utilize, we don't train, and and this applies really to any, any type of hold that would restrict someone's airways or cause unconsciousness. So we can go to the next slide. Let's see. So transparent policing and use of force requires law enforcement agency to notify attorney general when police officers use physical force resulting in death or qualifying a physical injury, or in a, in a it doesn't, this is also be applicable in another use of force one that will be coming up. But if it's, say we use, somebody fires a firearm at somebody, that would also be reported. So we've had policies and procedures in place with regards to conducting internal investigations since, since I've been here in 2012. And any updates that we've had since then, as you see in 2020, have been implemented into the current policy, bringing them up to date and reflective of current legislation. I think that's it for that one. We can go to the next one. So duty to intervene. That, again, lessons learned. We all have an obligation. We're police officers. We, we have to take care of what is right and what is wrong. And when we see things that are being done that are not best practice, are crossing the line, where, where lines have been crossed in the use of force, we have a responsibility, if we're at that scene and we're observing this, number one, we have the opposite, the obligation to stop it as quickly as possible and as safely as possible, but we also have the obligation to report that. So again, this is, this is stuff that Carlton Police Department has already had in their policies, and in 2022, we have, we updated to current policies and reflective of legislation. We can go to the next one. So tear gas and chemical agents. We haven't, since 2012, we haven't trained or used or implemented any type of chemical agents since 2012. And then, of course, with the legislation, we've updated our policies to incorporate anything that was not currently in that policy. So again, these, these are pretty quick go-tos as far as the, the answer that I'm giving you. We just, we don't use it, we don't train in it, and so we recognize that there's you know, there's pros and cons in the right settings, but we just, at this, we just choose not to be, have that implemented in our tools. So we can go to the next one. We can actually go to eight. So officer misconduct modifies police officer's duty to report misconduct, requires a police officer to report violation of certain minimum standards, requires law enforcement unit to investigate the report of misconduct and violation of standards. Again, we've already had those policies in place with regards to any observed misconduct, whether it's internal or whether it's observed from another agency, or if we observe anything that, that is inappropriate, our policy dictates we will report it and conduct an investigation as dictated. And then, of course, any language legislative update, language has been implemented into that. We can go to nine. So requires law enforcement unit that imposes discipline, including economic sanction on police officer to report to the Department of Public Safety Standards and Training, requires the department to include discipline for police officers involving economic sanctions in statewide online database of information about police officers. And you know, this is a great, this is a, a great thing for law enforcement, because you don't want someone that has demonstrated misconduct to be able to get, go to another agency and somehow bypass bringing forth that information. So when you do have someone that crosses that line, that does commit misconduct, you know, that's, this is not the profession for them. We need somebody that's going to take care of our citizens and represent the industry accordingly. So we have the new legislative language in our policy currently, and again, we've had reporting policies in, in our policies since 20, or since 12, 2012. We can go to the next one. So use of force reporting direction law, this is what I'm talking about with the use of deadly force or attempted, or use of force that could be capable of serious injury or so we've again had a reporting policy in place. And then with the FBI, there was the mandatory requirement that we not only reported at state level, but at the federal level in this database. If there is deadly physical force, seriously bodily injury, and then a discharge of a firearm that's directed at an individual. So again, this creates accountability for all of us collectively under the same umbrella. All right, we can go to 11. So the medical aid response requires police officers to be trained in airway and circulatory anatomy and physiology and certified in cardio pulmonary resuscitation. So again, we've already, we already trained that, we already practiced that. Our requirement for first aid is, is renewing every two years. We, as a department, do it every year because we feel it enhances our efficiency and proficiency in, 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 in getting the first aid needs to our citizens and anybody that would come in contact that should need that. So again, we, this is an area that we really feel is something that we keep on on something that is, that is so, can be so dynamic, and you know, as you go through your first aid trainings and things like that, you'll see that in essence, things are the same, but sometimes things change that are critical issues. You know, and, and of course, you know, this comes back to positional affixation and lessons learned. You know, you put people in the car and, and we have, you know, when you look at the chargers that we have, those are very confined spaces. And you know, back in the day when everybody was buying chargers, those were the thing. But you don't know what you're dealing with until you're dealing with it. So when you're trying to put prisoners' custodies into a area or a a limited space such as the chargers provide, you're increasing your risk with regards to bringing potential harm to that individual because they're so confined and constricted. So we're very conscious about how we train and, and keep on the, on the forefront of our mindset that when we do take somebody into custody and they're placed in our car, we monitor them, they're, we, we make sure that, you know, their position is is, is the least restrictive of blood or airway restriction. So you know, it's something that we, it's an ongoing training for us and an ongoing issue that, again, lessons learned. We've seen the lawsuits, we've seen the unfortunate deaths that have occurred because of things that we in law enforcement have learned over the years, and if we don't take those lessons learned and make us better people, we're not we're not serving our citizens or the industry the way we should be. We can go to 12. So large agency accreditation. So the new, the legislation dictates that one or more accrediting bodies of law enforcement agencies within 35 or more sworn police officers, phases, and requirements for law enforcement agencies to become accredited based on agency size. I think you're going to see this become more of a mandated issue at some point in time for even smaller agencies. And the reason I say that is because, again, it's the consistency, it's accountability, it's the transparency, not only for your community, but also for the industry in itself. If we're all holding ourselves accountable, and I, and I got to tell you, us being accredited, I believe we're still the smallest agency in Oregon that's accredited and have been since 2013. And for us, and we, every year, we have to, we have certain obligations we have to meet, have certain standards. And then every three years, we get, we have an outside source come in and re-accredit us by viewing all of what we do and our policies, our procedures, the way we operate out of our cars, our buildings, our records, our evidence. So everything it, we, it also highlights where we may be falling short for the year. So if we find, if there's an area that we've, you know, been falling short, this accreditation process makes us revisit it. And, and law enforcement isn't just a simple, you know, go out on the street and run traffic or arrest people. This is, you know, it's a very high liability profession, and whether you're a large agency or a small agency, the, the the liability that, that goes hand in hand with it is, is is incredible. So we have an obligation to stay at the forefront of policies and, and best, you know, best practices and, and things that keep us ahead of the game as much as possible. And, and again, I, I keep bringing up lessons learned, but most everything that you see is from stuff that we either forgot about or didn't train enough or consistently, and we fall back into that lessons learned and, and, and it brings, it gets us into trouble. So so the accreditation for us is just incredible. We've had large agencies come to us to, based on our how we have our accreditation process as an example, and the accrediting, accrediting agency that does accredit us in Oregon, you know, refers in Oregon, you know, refers the, these organizations to us. So you know, it makes us feel good that we're doing something halfway right, that we can set an example for not only our community, but for the industry and for the accreditation component of it. Let's see, we can go to the next one. I think, I, I think I've, I've got another one that I'm going to talk about before I go into the bias crimes training, and that is the body cams. We've got, so we, in Yamhill County, I'm going to go back real quick to accreditation. You've got the three largest agencies in Yamhill County and Carlton PD that are accredited in Yamhill County. So body cams, we are the only agency in that I'm, I'm aware of that has an active body cam program and has been since two thousand fifteen. This program, our officers, you know, a lot of agencies that people aren't used to body cams and, and you know, it's, you know, they look at what is the purpose of this body cam coming in here is it's a monitor, monitor how I'm doing things because they want to catch me doing something bad or they want me to mess up or that's not it. It's about keeping us under control. It's about keeping the citizens or the individuals we have contact out on the street. When, when people see that body cam on it, on us and we tell them we're body, using our body cam to audio and video record them. It has a tendency to de-escalate and our formula that we utilize every single day. And it's at the bottom of our signature line in our emails is time plus distance plus communication equals de-escalation. And it is our obligation to remind ourselves that no matter what the encounter is, you know, with, with mental health becoming a huge, huge issue that we deal with domestic violence, you know, those components are all critical. And we, not only do we use it within law enforcement, we take that formula into our personal lives and it makes us better people. So if you, if you look at the time, it's not doing it as fast as you can. Sometimes you may take a long time to just deal with the situation, you know, the distance, keeping the distance, not being in close proximity to your, to your threat and/or to the individual that you're talking to. And you know, that close distance, if somebody decides to do something, you know, maybe causes a, a higher degree of use of force because you didn't have that distance to work with. And then communication, communication is, is understanding. I mean, we wear all kinds of hat, hats in this uniform. And you know, we, we are expected to be experts in a whole bunch of different areas. And you know, we try to do the best we can. And when we, when we get into these situations, we have to be able to adapt our communication to the given situation. But sometimes it's not necessarily communicating. Sometimes it's just not saying anything and letting whatever the circumstance process out without escalating it by continuing things that might be irritating the individual that you're talking to. And so, you know, again, body cams, they're not required by law for all agencies to have. We do have the three largest agencies in Yamhill County currently looking at body cams and implementing body cam programs within their organizations. And so I just, it's just such a critically important component of, you know, minimizing liability and also, you know, transparency and, and accountability. So we can go to the last one, which is the bias crimes training. Again, we've been, that's been something that's been in play for, for some time. We've had it implemented in our policies and procedures since two thousand twelve. There is a mandatory annual reporting required regardless of whether you investigate a biased crime throughout the year. So every year we have to submit what bias crimes that we've had, or if, even if we haven't, we have to report that we didn't have any during that particular year. So that's really kind of it in a, in a encapsulation of really the, the high points of legislative issues that we saw come across. And, and so if anybody's got any questions, feel free to go ahead.
Kevin, you have talked before and you just mentioned this briefly of in the last few minutes when you were talking about the body cams, that you've talked to me about this before, the three elements, was it time, distance? What was the third thing?
Communication.
Communication, right, which, you know, and I know because I've spoken to you that that's a very important element of how this, our department is run. And you know, these requirements now are just, you know, across the country, probably a lot of departments haven't run as efficiently in that way. And it's putting, you know, in Oregon statutory requirements that we have to follow, that I think is probably, you know, already been following. And just by using those three elements, it's like an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure.
Absolutely. And, and based on our, our, our community policing philosophy, that's in conjunction with what the council implemented back in two thousand twelve. You know, that, that's all part of the equation. I mean, and then, and, and I guess, I guess the final thing that I would bring into that, 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 that keeps us, you know, keeps us in check is the lessons learned. We got to keep going back and look at what's happened in the past to keep us from prevent, or prevent us from doing it in the future again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kevin, thank you. I, does anybody else have any questions or comments?
How many crash or charges do we have left?
We've got two chargers, but we will be, you know, they're, they're two top, two thousand twelve vehicles. So we'll be kind of transitioning those out. So I, I got to tell you, the interceptor that the council provided us with two years ago, I think, is when they authorized it. Night and day, the room in that, not only for equipment, but in particular for anybody that we had taken custody or that has to be back there. The room is just, there, there's just no comparison.
Thank you. And I guess once again, once we have a little more freedom of movement, anybody wants to do a ride along with the police department, I would strongly advise it and recommend it. It's a great experience and it was a real eye opener.
Absolutely.
When we get to a point where it's easier to do, I'd say do it.
I agree.
Chief, thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
And moving on to F Public Works presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, councilor, there is an expressed interest in receiving the information from the public works department. So Director Burnham is here this evening to answer any questions you might have and provide some general information about our public work.
You made it.
Oh, I've been listening there. So I hear you have a couple of for me.
Does anybody have any questions, Republic Works?
Somebody has the initial question, right?
Right. And approximately how many miles of line do we service? Water, sewer?
Okay, so on the water line, right now we have approximately thirteen miles of water line. About four point five miles in town. And then sewer line is real close to the same amount as the water line, about four point seven miles of sewer within the city limits.
How many water meters do we have, Brian? Do you know off the a rough number? Do we serve?
I think we have about twelve ounces right now.
There's a little over nine hundred in town. It's about a hundred and three side of town.
And then can you speak a little bit about the outside of town? I know we have at least one water district. Is that, is that the only east water district? Is that the only other water district we have in town outside of city limits or is there another one?
Yeah, it was about. There's two, there's a water district on, it's between Carlton and Yam Hills, about forty-two connections up there. And then we have East Carlton Water Company that's east of Carlton and they, I think they're around twelve or fourteen connections. Valley View pretty much runs their own district. They do all maintenance and a repair up there. They have a master meter, they do all their meter, on meter repairs. They do their own billing. And then East World, Water, East Carlton Water Company, as of just the last few years have been doing their own maintenance on the system as far as water line repairs. And currently we still do the meter reading out there and any maintenance right at the meter. But that's, that's where we're at with that outside district.
How many meters do we still have that you need to go physically read? Or are they getting, is it getting closer or are they all of electronic?
I think, I think we have about thirty to do and then they're all going to be completely changed over to the AMR system. Ninety some, you know, ninety-nine, ninety-five percent complete on that.
So this last, especially when you were working on the transmission line, you guys were doing a lot of whack-a-mole with water line leaks in city. Was that like, were you having, how many a week even were you getting with the water line leaks?
Oh, we had a, that one period, we had some leaks back when the temperature changed, which is pretty common. You know, one or two a week, that one week we had several. Part of that too was the ground was, you know, really hard, no, didn't have any. We didn't have any precipitation yet too. This was before the cold spell. And a lot of times you get a lot of shifting and then you start having these leaks pop up primarily on old galvanized lines. So there was a period of time there, we had, we had some real, we had quite a few leaks there in a period of about three weeks.
So is there a specific time of year then, from what you're saying, when you, when you're going to see more leaks than you would at other times?
It can be, yes. Yeah, it was, it was a real dry fall. The ground was super hard and it, they're just, it does, there's no give to some of the old pipes and we start seeing a lot of the old galvanized pipes break. So we repaired several back in the fall. And then, and you get, you get cold weather. You'll see, you'll see some lines, we'll have some problems with some lines during the cold spell too.
Hey Brian, I know we're kind of chipping away at things, but it, do you have any kind of like estimation of like, of the four and a half miles of water in town and the four point seven or roughly four and a half of sewer? How much of that is kind of newer infrastructure and how much of that is aging, needs replaced? Is there any kind of number you can throw at that?
On water, we're, we're probably about sixty-five percent later model water line. And we're probably still have about another thirty-five percent. It's a cast iron in six inch variety, four inch variety that, you know, needs to be replaced. But overall, you know, we have a good valving system now, our hydrants. We have about a half a dozen hydrants I'd like to get changed out, but we have pretty much predominantly later model hydrants all through town. And we got a very good valving system now. So we have a lot more control on the system. And you know, I, I feel really good about it. The water system, we're, we still got, we still have some distribution work to do. But you know, overall, the system without a town, what we're doing at the water plant, you know, we're in very good shape for a town this size. And with the AMR system, we're one of the few small towns that have that. We are so, we're very efficient on meter reading and we're able to work with our customers on leakage and water loss. It's all available online that we can, we can pick it up and go talk with people and, and work out some of the issues that had to do with a water consumption in the past that we didn't have that kind of data. And it's, it's really cleared up a lot of things for us.
So Brian, that was water. How about aging need on wastewater?
Can you say that again, Shannon? I couldn't, you kind of, I didn't hear that.
You're talking about water and about newer versus aging needs and where we were for water system. How about wastewater?
Okay, so wastewater is a whole different animal, except for subdivision over the last twenty-five years. We haven't really engaged in any kind of a sewer upgrade on the collection system since I've been here, except on Park Street. Excuse me. So Main Street, Grant Street, Yam Hill, East Main, Harrison Street, parts of Polk, a lot of this system is somewhere in the seventy-five year old range. And we've, I've really experienced the last, it's been about eight to ten years, a lot of sewer laterals failing. And so we, we pretty much have a, a process that we use, it's worked for us to get the repair done quickly. We've been contracting out most of the repairs in that time. Most of it's because of the depth and the liability. A lot of times we're having to bring in large shoring or coffins to work in, you know, anywhere from fifteen to eighteen feet. So it's, it's, it's quicker. We've been using contractors to do those types of repairs. And then we assist with finding the, finding the cause, scheduling, having the materials available and then we'll, we, we help with the repair. But it's a, it's very much been an ongoing thing for about ten year. And it's really one of my big concerns right now is it's time to shift concerns to the collection system and start getting these upgrades implemented because it, it's, it's, it's at the end of its life.
Right. On Creek pump's good though and everything, right? And also the plant itself is just the sewer line we're talking about, correct? The lagoons, sewer plant, all that are good?
I think I but Hon Creek Pump Station, you asked a question.
Yeah, that's all good and upgraded and all good to go.
Yes, to
It's in process.
It's a process?
The Hon Creek Pump Station we're at, Hon Creek Pump Station is being upgraded starting in April. And so it's going to have more capacity.
And what about our pump station down by Yam Hill? Is that all good and updated?
Yeah, so we updated that approximately twelve years ago. Yes, we got a flight system in there, we can update it well, well. We got it's a whole flight system, controls, pumps, we got two jockey pumps, two fifty horsepower main pumps. We did, we upgraded the pipe from the pump station to the lagoons, the force main. And we're looking to do the headworks upgrade here shortly with some of that money that we recently. Uh, with some of that uh money that we recently um. I think, is that ARPA, Shannon, that is gonna fund our, our headworks up? Okay, so we're gonna be upgrading the headworks, that'll, that'll have to do with uh, uh, the bar screen area. Uh, the flume uh that comes into the, the large wet well and then also. Uh, uh, quite a bit of the main line as it comes into the headworks. Uh, that's, uh, there's quite a bit involved in that. And um. So it's, it's, it's at the time that it needs to be upgraded, so. Uh, yeah, I, I wanna commend Shannon on, on get, helping us get that and uh. I'm looking forward to getting that thing upgraded down there.
Ryan, can you talk about the wastewater plant upgrade?
The current one that's down. Yeah, so the uh, the original lagoons were put online back in nineteen eighty-nine. And uh, so we're looking at uh thirty-three years old uh with the lagoons. System, it's been a very good system for Carlton. Um, it was upgraded in ninety-six with some additional aeration. And they did some uh work on the contact chamber. And so we're, it's time for an upgrade out there. Uh, it's, it's a, it's a DEQ. Um. I would say. I, I guess you could use the word outdated. Uh, we're, we're having to do upgrades on the outfall. Uh, this will take care of our ammonia. Ammonia content of the uh effluent. Uh, so the outfall be upgraded. We're gonna go to a gravity system with a large pipe. We won't have to pump. Uh, which we're having to do at different times in the winter time. Uh, we're gonna go gravity on that. We're gonna have increased duration. Uh, for better treatment. Uh, we're gonna pick up about a foot and a half of uh. Freeboard. We're gonna take, uh, take the lagoons up about. Uh, a foot and three quarters, so we're gonna be able to have more capacity in the winter time. Uh, we're gonna dredge those uh lagoons, uh, which will be great. Uh, that's gonna make provisions for years to come before they'll ever have to do that again. Uh, we've been really fortunate to extend past the. Typically, you're, you're looking to have to dredge after twenty years and we're at, you know, we're at thirty, thirty-three now, so. Uh, we've been very fortunate on not have to dredge. Uh, we were monitoring our sledge levels for several years. And, you know, so. We uh, DQ felt like we, we didn't have to do a dredging earlier, so that, that's been quite a cost savings in the past. Uh, to be able to extend it out that far, but uh, we'll be getting it in the upgrade. Uh, we'll have a new uh, uh, chemical feed system, uh, a- additional contact chain for disinfection. And then we'll have an upgraded irrigation pump system. And um, we're gonna be doing some work on the irrigation line. So it's gonna be real solid out there uh for uh many years to come after that's upgraded. Uh, we're, we're actually gonna be collecting some soil. There's a, there's a construction about to. Take place, community home builders up there off of Roosevelt Street. They have some soil available. And we're gonna be taking some of that. It's kind of a, it was kind of a uh good um. Opportunity for us to take in some good clean soil, have it available for our project, so. We're gonna be staging that uh out at the lagoons over the next uh few weeks. So, we're getting ready. Uh, engineering will be done in March or April. And then uh, we'll be getting uh the rest of, is the permitting. Uh, getting all that ironed out. And then it'll probably be, it'll probably be a two-year project, different phases of it. And um, yeah, any questions on that?
No, any more questions? I know where to find Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. That was great information.
Any other questions or anything?
No, I'm liking pretty much.
We'll, we'll think about all of those tomorrow and be down, down in your office.
Okay, yeah. You wanna stop in and chat? Any of you are free to stop by at any time.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, moving along to item G, Yam Hill County ARPA grant agreements.
Right into wastewater. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Segway.
Jump right into the wastewater.
Right into the wastewater. So, um, we were, we asked for some grant funding. Uh, for part of the collection system that you've just heard is uh seventy-five years old and failing. Particularly on Grant Street. For that particular project, we are awarded a hundred and twelve five for the planning design of that project. Not the construction and implementation of that project. However, if you remember on your federal agenda, we do have a request for two million dollars in federal funding for that project. The city match for that planning design part of it is thirty-seven five hundred. The second project is the wastewater headworks. Also talked about is that the headwork screen has failed and is not operable. And so this would allow for that upgrade to happen. In this particular grant, we were awarded planning design, which is the same uh ratio of funding from the county, one twelve five. Compared to the city match of thirty-seven five. We were awarded here, the grant awarded construction implementation of the headwork facilities. And they, we were awarded three hundred and twenty-five thousand to our city matches, three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Those matches were requirement of applying to the grant. These grant agreements, they did come in very late this afternoon. Uh, they were forwarded to Mr. Gao. And uh, we would be, because we will receive funds within ten days upon execution of these agreements. And some of these planning and design are pretty critical. What we would be looking for today is a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the grant agreements to receive these ARPA funds. Subject to legal review and approval.
Yes. Always worth checking out. You never know. I said it's always worth asking. Um, is there any other conversation or discussion questions?
I'll move that the city council authorized the mayor to sign the grant agreements with Yam Hill County to receive the ARPA funds.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Hi.
All.
Opposed? Abstained? Cares? H, Holst Agreement Regarding Civic Building Parking Lot.
Mayor and Council, in front of you, you have.
Hi.
You have a proposal in front of you for the north parking lot and the west parking lot. Reason this is coming before you now is because when city, the civic building, city hall was put on hold. At that point in time, the parking lot was uh separated out as a separate project and provided to our city in ear for design. Since it needed to be done in by, in that, the city hall civic building. Um, that project was gonna go up to bid in February along with our East Main Street project to also maximize mobilization costs. We, when we met with Mark and Gordon, it became very clear based upon the design conversations that we had. It significantly impacted the design that Gordon had done. And so at that point in time, it was thought that it, it makes the most amount of sense. That these parking lots be designed in construction with the footprint of the building. And so therefore that is why this is in front of you today, sorry, tomorrow.
Hasn't been that.
Mark, do you wanna add on to that?
No, thank you. Appreciate it. And hopefully following the wastewater discussion, uh, you know, it kinda doesn't put us in the wrong position here, but. Yeah, so I, I appreciate you guys um, uh, inviting us on here and, and allowing us to propose on these. So, we um, uh, we, early in the discussion, we, we realized pretty, pretty early on that some of the. Uh, coordination that was done on the north parking lot uh was not in conjunction with um some of the scope limits that we set forth. Uh, and e- e- even with the previous design limits uh back in twenty twenty. And so we just had some overall footprint um overlap and issues, so. Um, it was easy enough for us to incorporate the north lot design along with the west parking lot design as well. Um, and, and include it all in one large submittal to planning and uh permitting. Um, instead of breaking them up into separate projects that have to be permitted separately and have to be bid out separately. Uh, it makes probably the most sense uh to do them all as one. Um, and we're happy to do it. Our, we, we uh gathered proposals from our consulting engineers for civil engineering. Uh, landscape architecture and um, uh, site lighting for um, uh, electrical engineering. Um, and with that, uh, you know, you, you guys have the proposals in front of you. Uh, the only thing that Holst is doing on top of that is just our contract management and some coordination. Um, with our consulting engineers and, and the majority of the scope there that you see is their engineering scope of services.
Is there any discussion, questions?
Does this change the overall price of the? Of the city hall, new city hall, police department buildings that were already kind of locked, not really locked in, but we had a target. Amount.
So our target remains five million dollars. However, the parking lot was always considered a separate project and budgeted separately since the past pausing of the project. So there is a separate line item available and budgeted for. So, does it increase it?
So does that, so the amount of, the money for that is gonna be. We've already, we already have that money or we're gonna have to tack down to. Um, the loan or however we get the money for the city hall.
We have that money.
Okay, so in essence, it's not increasing the five million. Since you just said that we've already got that money in the bank, correct?
So, the five million was always budgeted separately. What I'm saying is there's not an increase in this budget why I have. Cause it was, the, the parking lot was pulled out of this project and always budgeted separately.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Do we have any pictures of what the parking lot could look like?
Uh, yeah, it's cause they haven't designed it.
Sorry. No, I don't have any uh preliminary designs.
I can guarantee you it's gonna be asphalt with some striping.
Yeah. Probably, probably black. Pierre May, did you have any comments or questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, okay, do we have a motion?
I can do it. Well, um, it's, I know that the city council authorized the mayor to execute all documents necessary to complete. The north and west parking lots as part of the civic building project.
Second.
Let, let me just comment that there will be a, the need to, to prepare an amendment similar to the last amendment. It's your agreement to incorporate a proposal that they made. And that's the document that the mayor will sign, not the one that's been presented.
Thank you.
Does that change the motion?
No, it doesn't change the motion.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the Federal Consultancy and Advocacy Service.
Thank you, Mayor. Like last year, we entered in, we decided to enter into a memorandum of understanding with CFM advocates to pursue our federal agenda. At the time, because of timing, we requested that a RFP issued at a later date reflecting just the federal portion. Of the advocacy process. And so in front of you is the RFP that originally considered both federal and state advocacy. And has been modified by and reviewed by legal counsel for the federal advocacy portion of it. And Nicholas, I don't know if you wanted to speak to that at all.
Sure. So the, the RFP that you have in front of you is largely the same as the earlier one with minor variations. Uh, for specifically federal uh lobbying efforts, there is. Uh, an enhanced requirement for ethical standards. Essentially, uh, because of new laws that were passed, they have to be uh registered as a lobbying firm of some sort uh with the federal government. For transparency purposes, so essentially whichever. Uh, company you end up, or consultant you end up going with uh to do lobbying at a federal level. Uh, by law, they are required to be registered with uh, with trans- the transparency uh required by law. Uh, so that's essentially the only major change from the earlier. Uh, proposal that you had for both federal and state is specific call out on the federal lobbying side. Uh, and uh, another provision which essentially says if they are in Oregon, they should be registered with the Oregon ethical lobbying. Uh, laws, uh, or they can provide reasoning why they aren't. For example, if the company has no presence in Oregon other than in Carlton. And they don't lobby on behalf of Oregon, they're only at a federal level. In theory, they wouldn't need Oregon Government Ethics Commission uh registration. But uh, that would be something where the, the consultant can provide an explanation to you. Uh, as to why they don't need that registration, uh, but they will need to be uh registered with the Lobbying Disclosure Act.
Any questions? Discussion, comments?
I uh make a motion, the city council authorized staff to issue the federal consulting and advocacy lobbying services RFP.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Alrighty. Moving into a discussion of the Tourism Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Recently, although not that recently, it's been happening quite a bit. The Tourism Committee has had difficulty in obtaining quorum for the meetings and therefore conducted business. Uh, we certainly have had, as you are aware, a number of applications and approvals for additions to the Tourism Committee. But um, when it comes to meeting time, we've been having trouble. And it's come to a point that both the counselor and his staff thought it was worth a discussion with council. Or at least starting the discussion with council about what the future of the Tourism Committee is. Um, it currently, it is felt by staff that having the Tourism Committee. Committee in its current function or non-functioning is actually more work than if we took the responsibilities in-house. Just with all the rescheduling, the packet preparation, cancellations, setting up the meeting times. Um, Christie, I know you have much more in-depth experience with this. Do you want to mention anything?
Sorry. Um, yeah, I just wanted to talk about, um, for the last three years. Um, we had some difficulties um with the committee. We've changed it to evening times. We've changed it, we've advert- we advertise it uh constantly. We do have a couple dedicated people on the committee now, but we've been unable to establish any quorum. Um, so we prepare the packets, we send them out. There's no attendance and then we have to send cancellations and redo the packets and transfer the materials. And um, so the city right now is taking on um, the burden of. Uh, just making sure the regular dues or subscriptions that go with our website, visit Carlton, are taken care of and collecting those reports. But we don't have a body that's moving any work forward, for example, um, getting some. For example, getting some banners done and the rack cards. I, it's just been three years of trying to get it to happen. And we have posted many times what, and for example, even the budget committee now, we're still several members short. A lot of people just aren't coming forward to serve on those particular committees. So we do want to see some things move forward. We need help from the council on what to do next.
So Kristi, you say you have two, two or three good candidates that really show up and do all the package stuff for the tourism committee?
Yes, we really do. We have
Go ahead, sir.
We have someone that actually has done some marketing. And then we have Tyson, who is the chair of the committee. And he is the, he works at Flannor's. We have two good members with good experience. And I think it's been equally as hard at them because they want to move forward. We're just not getting members or people to show up for the meetings.
So I guess my question would be if the city were to take this on, would those people be able to be volunteers to help out with the city staff on that part of it?
Yes. Yeah, I think we could do a coordinated effort. We'd have to run that by Walt because it would be dissolving the committee and then working with staff in it. I, I'm not quite sure how that would look legally.
I think that would just be a volunteer position, but that would be up to Walt to say that. But I think that would help and keep us going forward with this. Maybe down the road, we can back it out and continue.
Just do some kind of a restructuring with what
Yeah, just for now.
Folks that we've got now. Yeah, because we do have a couple of really good people on there.
We do, and we've missed some prime grant opportunities by not being able to establish a quorum. So it's all, it's kind of hard on our monies for that to get some extra things done.
If we, if we restructured, would we be able to apply for the grants then and do some of those things again? Do we have to have a committee?
No, the city has broad authority to make applications for those types of grants without a tourism committee. The city has broad authority to utilize volunteers under your workers' comp policy to assist city staff in carrying out city staff actions. So to the extent that city staff can coordinate with volunteers to do certain parts of tourism coordination, that, that can be done without, outside of the framework of the committee.
I have approached the subject with the Carlton Business Association. They understand the challenges. They don't have concerns. They recognize that the city wants to partner with them and is willing to have conversations, much like the volunteers have conversations about how we could partner to utilize these funds.
So the state, the Carlton Business Association, are they, they seem to be strong and ready and have people, the businesses, you know, they're active and everything. Where they can help out with this or
They have certain ideas that might be applicable to the state-defined definition of what we can use tourism funds for. And in that case, those ideas, just like volunteer ideas, we could look at at a staff level and budget for that in our budgetary process.
And one thing to note, on the, a lot of people don't understand the difference between the CBA and tourism. The tourism committee's job and role for the funds that are being used by statute through the state are to get people to come to Carlton. And then CBA's primary function is to entertain them while they're here. So having a coordinated effort between the two would be really good. But we have to, we can only do marketing to bring them here. We cannot like fund an event. It has to be in a marketing capacity by statute.
So I guess my next question, how does staff feel about that, you know, taking on the tourism committee for now with volunteers? Could that be handled or is the staff capable of doing that?
I can tell you that we have two strong people on the tourism committee as volunteers. I think we would just assist them with getting, like, for example, I'm going to use the rack cards that we've, we desperately need to get out to, in particular, the Portland area. And they would take on the design. They already have ideas. They just haven't had any quorum. So being able to work, get that rack card done. But then the difference would be that rack card would come to council for final consideration. It wouldn't be to the tourism committee for a vote. It would come to council.
Or alternatively to the city manager.
Yes.
I, the council would need to amend section 2.14 of the municipal code to change the function to eliminate the tourism committee as a standing committee and perhaps create a tourism advisory volunteer positions that report to city staff and cooperate with city staff. So if that's the direction you want to go, we would need to come back with an amendment to your code to restructure the tourism committee into an advisory ad hoc advisory committee that needs as needed.
It's not like a total elimination. It's a restructuring.
Yeah. Great redefinition.
Kristi, how many hours a month more burdened is this going to be on staff?
Well, I can talk to that a little bit. So currently, right now, staff has been preparing packets, sending out, trying to engage the tourism and encourage some participation. You're talking for the tourism, maybe 10 hours a month by the time we gather and get materials and prepare things for council and for the city manager to approve. It's small in nature.
Have you already seen it? I'm curious, but
It wouldn't really add anymore. Those 10 hours would just be absorbed in meeting with the volunteers, creating the rack cars or whatever project we're working on, rather than to do the packets, get them in meetings. The hours would just more.
I was going to say, because I have like one meeting a month. So, I mean, it's
I did actually reach out to former counselor, Maher, this week to discuss this with her a little bit, just to see what, if she had any ideas. She was going to do some noodling about it, think about it a little bit and see if she could come up with any ideas. Because right about the time that she was running with, when she was the chair of the, that council or the, the committee, yeah. It was very active and it was very busy and they were doing a lot of things. It was just not too long after she moved over into the city council that kind of moved out of the, the committee that things kind of started slowing down again. So for what it's worth, she was going to just kind of think a little bit about it and see if she, if she could come up with any thoughts or ideas.
So I don't think it takes a motion, right? I think it's just a, I think
If, if you would like staff to come back with some kind of proposed modification to chapter 2, 214 to give you an alternative to look at, then you could do that by consensus or by motion. That's your wish.
Consensus.
I, I would like that to happen.
I agree.
Okay, we will make that happen.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Okay. Highway 47 realignment update and discussion.
Okay, so OR 47 realignment has restarted. It's a very slow restart. We've had initial meetings on December 14th, which was basically a meet and greet with all 38 disciplines within ODOT that are involved in this project. We did meet again on January 18th. Again, there's not a lot of updates because they're just at the beginning of this design process. We did, we being the new project manager, so the new project manager and the new inter-area manager for ODOT came to the city of Carlton and met with a couple of property owners that are primarily impacted by this project. I was, I was asked to be a part of some of those meetings and I attended those meetings as well as I met with ODOT reps after those meetings. And today we had a follow-up meeting with the 3J because 3J is now the chosen outreach company for the OR 47 realignment project. So we emphasized how informed that communication, in fact, I invited the mayor council president to be a part of the meeting so I don't want to speak for you. But I emphasized that the overarching theme for communication and outreach in this project needs to be over-communication at multiple points, whether it's electronic or printed or carrier pigeon, donkey, whatever. And so they are still in the early stages of design. We have met with some of the key project team members. We're working to start planning a true engagement plan and have an early meeting, some sort of communication with the community. There is an online open house scheduled for the ADA project that we heard about first thing from this meeting in April to talk about traffic and construction. Since Friday, I will say I'm cautiously optimistic by them hearing my passion for them to communicate and work with the community. Again, I don't want to speak for the mayor or the council president, but I'd like to hear their thoughts from today's meeting.
Yeah, I got the impression, what's the woman's name? Who's the communication outreach?
Michelle.
Michelle. Yeah, I got the, I mean, my impression from that meeting today was just like night and day difference from my interaction, my personal interaction with ODOT back when we were first talking about the Main Street versus oh wait, the Monroe reroute. So and then I was also really happy that, I was going to ask you, Shannon, because I never really heard how 3J became involved in that project. Is it just sort of coincidental or?
Serendipity, I think.
I'm not entirely positive. I will tell you, when I was having discussions prior to the kickoff of this meeting, when I was learning about the transition of the area managers or project managers, I was still trying to have these conversations with ODOT about public outreach and communication. I had mentioned to Jenna, when she and I had a one-on-one conversation about this and the importance, that 3J had been selected for our comprehensive plan, develop the code update. And that their approach that I had seen outlined was set for our kickoff meeting about, again, getting a project vision, getting the website out there, the communication, I thought was the exact approach that ODOT needed to take in this project. So I don't know if that played a factor at all.
Apparently, they were on their list, right?
Yes, they were on the list.
They have a history, I think, but
Well, actually, they're new to the list and they had not received any feedback from being new to this contracted list. And Steve said he had sent an email and immediately said, hey, we could use you on OR 47 realignment. I had asked the new project manager, Paul Welch, to be at the March 1st meeting to meet you. At least he doesn't, he said, I don't have a lot of information. And I said, just a meet and greet. Again, to start that communication process. I did emphasize, Paul was very honest with some of the property owners, that some of the questions they were asking, he'd likely not have answers for six to eight months just because of where they are in the process. Today, I emphasized we cannot look dark on those for six months. I don't care if it's just one sentence update. And I think 3J, I don't know what your impression was, but I think both 3J and Michelle, who's part of the ODOT communication team, understood that and heard that.
They did. And it seemed to me that Paul was doing, was a little more comfortable with that, too. He was still like, you know, there are times when we're not going to be able to say much. But as Shannon said, and as the other two pointed out also, that doesn't matter. Just please say something, be present. Because one of the problems that we had before was just, ODOT kind of disappeared off the face of the earth, you know? It was like, what's going on? Well, you know, we don't have anything to tell you, so we're not going to talk to you.
So when this project was going before, there was a group of community members that were asked to be on the committee. Is that going to go forward? So I did bring that up today as we have an established ad hoc committee. And as we work through an, a community engagement plan, where is the right place for that ad hoc committee? So again, we keep that productive movement forward. I am regularly, again, monthly, when I go to monthly CBA meetings, updating them on ODOT project, whatever information I have. I've asked them to reach out to me if they ever have any concerns or if they reach, if ODOT happens to reach out to them and they want to be at that meeting, let me know. I'll be there.
Go ahead. I was saying, I feel cautiously optimistic, you know, about this project now with 3J consulting being involved because, you know, both of these projects, the comprehensive plan and what we do with that and the realignment, there's so many areas of overlap. And I also think that having 3J involved is going to bring folk about more accountability, transparency with ODOT. I'm hopeful of that.
They seem to be pretty comfortable with 3J and there seemed to be some good energy between the two of them. Or was I imagining? It seemed like they seemed to be pretty comfortable together. So that's encouraging because that we'll have that. And we are, yeah, the ad hoc committee is, that's one of the things that we were talking about today was how and when we're going to start bringing them back online and getting that back up and running because that definitely needs to be done, too. Generally speaking, it appears that things are kind of slowly moving forward. The, the main, I think their main concern is that they work, I think, in, in kind of units. So you have a unit over, you know, a certain aspect of the project that they're going to be working on. And some of that they may be in town for and doing their surveying and the research and everything. And so we'll, we might see a whole bunch of activity there for a while. And then they more or less go dark for a little bit while they're working on maybe some of the technical stuff or getting a little bit more
They're having internal conversations.
Internal conversations. And what Shannon was trying to emphasize with them and we were saying is that even if you do that, maybe at least put, put a note up on the website that just says, hey, you know, we're busy, we're talking, we're doing this or something. Even if it's, even if they can make it into a joke or whatever, but something to keep people, to keep us all informed that, yeah, they haven't just gone away again, that they are there, they are working and that they're where they are within the process. We also warn them that anytime their people are on the ground here, they better make sure that they know that they're probably going to be approached by at least a dozen people asking them who they are, what they're doing and how, how things are going on the, on the project. So be ready to either know where to send them or, or have an answer.
With all that said and done, the route is still set. You go straight, whether it is street.
I think it's been signed now.
Yeah, the basic route, well, and with their, with the, the stiff is now approved and has been there. All of, all of their internal stuff has been approved to do the realignment.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that's there.
47 straight, run up the, and right, go down to Monroe or left, and then you go out back on 47.
That is the conceptual route right now as they're going through the process with us. Whether there's a small tweet or somewhere, I don't know, but I can't say that nothing would change. I can say that's the concept we've been shown since at least last April.
We're bypassing.
Yes.
But as an example, to your question, I mean, at least in the, in the initial design that was proposed to us, which caused all the consternation, whatever that was a year and a half ago. The, it was proposed that any traffic coming from the north that was going to eventually go on Main Street or that wanted to, I'm sorry, wanted to go to the sort of northeastern part of town, would not be able to go that direction on Monroe. It's just like closed off the traffic going in that direction.
Yeah, just sweep all the way through.
Yeah. And so for me, I mean, that Yeah. And so for me, I mean, that was like, whoa, that's a big problem. And so those kinds of things.
Wouldn't be able to come from the north, come into town, you're going to turn, turn to the left, go down Monroe. Then you have to turn right. You can't say like go straight down.
I mean, that's the current, that was what was proposed initially. What I'm saying, I mean, in answer to your question, what Shannon was saying, I think some of those things, I hope, are going to be re-looked at. Because I think that for me personally, that's a terrible idea.
Well, they've spent a lot of time, yeah. And they've spent a lot of time talking to Tony and, and Ken both about concerns that they have regarding their properties and access to the wineries and stuff like that. These guys are, you know, they're, they're actually starting from square one again almost because this is a whole new team. Um, you know, John Houston, who we had worked with, is gone. Christine, who is his, um, sidekick, is gone. And so it's a whole new group of people coming in. Um, and they just basically just started in November.
Yeah.
So they've got some catch-up to do and they're, I, I think they're working on it. They're trying to get caught up. They're trying to get themselves together, but.
It's, we talked a lot about pedestrian safety, um, a lot about bicycles. Talked a lot about, and I made it very clear on Friday, no more three-way stops, period. It has to be at least a four-way stop if not seven. So, but no more three-way stops.
No more light stops.
I want to spill like plain chicken.
Yeah, well, there are going to be stops, I think.
So, um, they were able to see the impact of the trucks on Main Street. They understood why a large, a significant amount of community bump that off Main Street. That was very well heard.
And they got to see a few of the intersections.
The day they were here, apparently according to Shannon, there was a tremendous amount of trucks going through town.
There is every day. Yeah, I didn't pay them to do it. I just had to. See, on the weekend.
Yeah.
So then with you.
Every weekend.
With you talking till about trucks coming up 47 coming through town, and then you got the session and talked to about the number of trucks that come some of West Main, they come up to the corner and turn on 47 there, or the log trucks that come north, they come in.
And go out to West Side?
And go out west.
So I took my little field trip. We went for a walking tour and they were able to see that personally. And so they're going to go investigate that because I said that's still going to be a problem if you're sweeping in down to Monroe. We still have people who are going to want to go straight into the right. Now, Main Street would be ours, so we can look at reducing, you know, you can't do truck traffic on that road. But what do we do about the people who still want to go to West Side or coming from West Side towards?
We tried that before about no trucks on Main Street. I mean, I'd like to do it.
Director Burden brought it up again.
We had our council on 80 eyes looking at us. Remember that, Carrie.
West Side and New.
Remember that.
Or like you say, the, the log, mainly log trucks come from the north and come in and instead of going through Yen Hill to West Side and run out, they come 47th and Carlton.
So I think Friday was the first time they were able to visualize and see that situation. Um, and that was one of the emphasis of, I took them on the walking tour and I pointed out to where the school was and where children would be, you know, utilizing Main Street to get to the school. Uh, and they were going to explore that after we left company. So I asked them to look, I recognized that their purview was in those road lines. But I asked them to look at a whole list of community queues.
That's why I think 3J will help. I hope.
Yeah. Generally, that's.
Well, me annoying them all.
Yeah, yeah, and that too.
We have the meeting, I know Linda goes, and that is, are these open to the rest of the council people to go up?
So these are not, these are not public meetings. In fact, uh, one of the things we talked about was how comfortable ODOT staff felt about having essentially clients at these meetings. And so they described in non-public world, they would meet around a square table and it would just be staff talking amongst themselves. There was only one project that came to mind where they had invited their client to the table. So, um, I have, it's not a public meeting and I have, we have to be very respectful and careful about what is heard in that meeting uh, about not making sure that it's transmitted before it's ready to be transmitted.
So the answer is a bit funny.
That was a long answer. No, it's not a public meeting. I have.
That was a nice way to say it, no.
Only Linda and.
Well, at this point, I think Shannon has probably had the bulk of the conversation with them. This is the second contact that I've had with them out of the last, what, three, four months you've been in con- conversations. So, um, yeah, they're, they're they're polite. I mean, they're certainly, they're very organized. They're not going to tell me to go away, but they're not used to it, I don't think.
I have a question about the ad hoc committee because I know it was a long time ago that, that people were being asked to participate on that. Where does that stand now? Is that, is that committee filled up? Is there?
We saw that list of people.
We saw the list of people, um, and then reviewing minutes from when that ad hoc committee was being put together. My understanding is it is full. It is in that minutes of, okay, we are cutting it off now. And so we do have that list of people. When we're ready to reengage that committee, we would of course contact that list and say, are you still willing to serve? Yeah.
I think right now we're just kind of very carefully feeling our way. Kind of like petting a porcupine.
A lot of band-aids.
Yeah, never know. Okay, so there we are with that, I think for the.
We have one more.
We have one more real, yeah, real quick one. Any, um, yeah, the sidewalk project letter, this is.
So you will be hearing more about this in March, so where progress has come to. But right now, um, we are asking for support of a letter of support. A letter of support for the Carlton workforce sidewalk project so that we can go out for donations for tools and other materials as well as grant funding for any gaps in our funding scheme in order to complete those sidewalks from first through seventh on those sides of Main Street.
But basically that is, if you guys got any comments or?
Need a motion?
I, I don't know that we have a motion necessarily, but.
It's just the FYI.
I, I.
You sent the letter?
I haven't said it. I haven't done anything. It's more a matter of running it by you guys, making sure that it's not really stupid or I made a really bad mistake, which is always possible. So the letter.
I'm sorry, yes.
Shirley was asking, do we just need consensus on that or?
A, a motion of support that the mayor signed this letter for, to support this project moving forward and obtaining donations for any grants.
Letter goes to?
Well, it could be anyone, so for like tools that, if we're going to approach Wilco. Um, so it could be going to Wilco.
Potential donors.
Potential donors for whatever, yeah. Just so they know that like the city is supporting it so that they did, they're not just going out and doing it on their own.
When I talked to Seth Corr and Will and the workforce partnership, they thought this would go a long way.
Just to know that the city is supporting this.
So we just all need to agree that, yes, go ahead with this. I know that we let this letter be sent.
All in favor?
But it will be sent multiple times, right, to potential donors?
Yeah.
All the merits assigned to be sent to potential donors.
Yeah, that's what I got, too. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. The other thing, real quick on this, is that, um, because a lot of you guys probably have more context, is that they are looking for students who or you who would be interested in being involved in this program. So if you know of anybody? Yes, definitely. Yeah, definitely. Because when they come out of this, at, at least, you know, my understanding is when they come out of this, they're, they're employable as.
So is there an age limit?
Isn't it like? So you get some recognition for doing this. So it's like, yeah.
Yeah.
What I've heard is like teens, early twenties. I don't know that there's an exact age limit, but that's generally.
Yeah, yeah. High school senior on a consider looking at graduating. Anyway, that's where we are. Okay, is there anything else? Anybody got anything? All in favor? Aye. Let's stay.
Wait, one more?
Just for council information, Nicholas and I are both attending a meeting. We're only jargon for one of us.
And we appreciate that, well.
It's only fair.